Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the May 9, 2017, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And I want to thank all of who've joined with us this morning. And we've got a pretty full agenda, both in the morning and the afternoon. And so we look forward to working through the items and hearing from some of you on some of the items we have before us today. So as we get started, just note, we don't expect one of our colleagues to be here today due to illness. Is that correct?
I believe she'll be arriving a little bit later.
Maybe join us a little later. Okay. So with that, then I'm going to turn to our clerk Flo Evans to call the roll, establish a quorum, read a couple of things into record, and then we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance and get into the agenda.
Good morning, Supervisors. Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters is absent. Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Flo, just to be clear, we're showing the vote up on the board here versus the screen. There you go. Thank you.
No problem. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 12, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I know we have some students that we're going to recognize here, and so I don't know if Teresa or Tri would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd join us, and one of you want to come to the podium and invite us to ... I mean, both of you. Why don't you both come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you would? No pressure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I know you weren't prepared to do that, but we'll get a chance to recognize you for some of your outstanding work in a moment. So thanks for being here with us. Okay, Flo, we'll turn to the agenda. I know we have an off-agenda speaker here. We'll try to get to that sometime this morning if we have a gap in the items. And so I know Mr. King is here, so if you'll be patient, we'll try to work that in amongst some of the other items. So Flo, go ahead.
Okay. So for your consent matters, items 1 through 42. For item number two, you are introducing an ordinance, adding Chapter 11.02 and amending Chapter 11.32 of Title 11 of the Sacramento County Code relating to airports. You're waiving full reading and continuing to May 23 for adoption. Also, for item 31, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.140 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the technology cost recovery fee, waiving full reading and continuing to May 23 for adoption. For item 32, I want to make a note that you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16.90 of Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code relating to construction permits. You waived reading on this item on April 25. And that concludes my notes for your consent matters.
Okay. Turn to my colleagues and see if they have any items you wish to either speak to or pull off the consent calendar. Ms. Ross?
No.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Serna? Okay. I just had a couple of items I wanted to comment on, and maybe you could read those into the record. Item 16, 21, and 22, if you could, Flo. And we'll leave them on the consent calendar. I want to make an offer.
Okay, no problem. Item 16, authorize the sheriff to execute expenditure agreements with 12 medical personnel registries for fiscal years 2017-18 through 2019-20.
21 and 22.
Oh, okay. I'll do that.
If you could, please.
No problem. Authorize the sheriff to execute an agreement with American Correctional Solutions incorporating doing business as Spectrum Accountable Care Company Incorporated in the amount of $2,293,243 for onsite radiological services at the Sacramento County Adult Correctional Facilities for the period of July 1, 17, through June 30, 20. And then for item 22, authorize the sheriff to execute an agreement with American Correctional Solutions in the amount of $1,269,081 to operate onsite medical specialty care clinics at the Sacramento County Adult Correctional Facilities for the period of July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020.
Good. Thank you for reading those into the record. Just wanted to offer a comment that the total of these three contracts over a three-year period for very necessary and certainly important to the welfare of the inmates in the county jails is totaled almost $20 million here. And I know that at least as one member of this board, I've asked questions about correctional health as it relates to general fund expenditures and a growing amount of money that's being required annually in our budgets. And I guess the comment I wanted to make between, again, these have an annual amount of about $6.5 million in estimated cost, and then, as I said, a total of almost $20 million, is that we just routinely approve these on the consent calendar. And again, we can't have a gap in those services because the people are in our care and custody 24/7. But I guess what I'd like to just to ask you, Nav, and I know we had a chance to chat about this a bit, I continue to have concerns about, you know, the ability for us to have some, you know, and I don't say oversight may not be the right word, but to have some better understanding about any cost containment and where we're headed because the presumption is that, and I think it's rightfully and fair to presume and assume, that we're going to provide these services. But I don't know if we get best value. We have to utilize, we're utilizing registries now for going on 20 years, which has a certain amount of costs associated with it. We contract for specialty services for x-ray and other services within the, in specialty care. And then we also transport off-site. There's a cost associated with deputies that have to transport. We have contracts with other health providers, including, I believe it's San Joaquin County. And so all that bundled together, to me, just presents a very high-dollar number, and again, one maybe that's not avoidable, and maybe we're getting best value. But I don't have a strong sense about that as we continue to move forward in our budgetary considerations for this year and years going forward. These contracts now are for three years, so we're basically going to build budgets around this for the next three years without really having had that, what I believe needs to be a more thorough conversation by this board, certainly involving the community and sheriff and healthcare providers and whoever else would be a part of that. And I thought we were going to get a better look at this when we had the adult correction review some time ago, but that focused more on in custody and some of the costs associated with this. And so I don't know if you want to offer any comments now, but I felt compelled this morning to raise this once again because, you know, we approved this today, and it's done for the next three years.
Now, I appreciate the comments, and I am going to work, and our team's going to work with the sheriff's staff about the questions you've asked. You've been asking those questions for a couple of years. We owe you a better answer than what we've given you. And our plan is to come back and give you what is the cost containment, what is it that we've been doing. This is a line item, if you will. The budget unit has seen some expenditure increases, and as you mentioned, these are expenses that are unavoidable. But the question still stays is are we doing everything we can to save money in it, and we're going to be pursuing that.
And I would just highlight, once again, I've said it once or twice this morning, but, you know, these are not monies that flow from federal state sources primarily, although realignment money comes from state. We use that for some of the healthcare offset, I believe. I could be wrong. But in large part, these are general fund expenditures because once folks are in our custody, they don't qualify for, you know, Medi-Cal or certainly Medicare, I guess, if they were that aged. But it just seems to me that we have to retain focus on this and can do right by the folks that are in our custody and care, but also it takes capacity for our ability to provide for folks who may have similar needs but are unable to access them in the broader community as well as the expenditure dollars. And I think we're at $32 million general fund contribution and probably $50 million or more in expenditures, if I'm not mistaken. Those numbers may be a bit off.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, again, I appreciate your comments, and I guess I would trust that maybe as soon as by the time we get into budget conversations in a few weeks that we could have a little clearer idea as to how you're going to kind of delve into this. I know you've been giving some thought to it, so I appreciate that.
I will do.
Supervisor Serna?
No, Mr. Chair, I actually do have some questions on other items.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, okay. That's all I had on that, and so I'd sort of leave those on the consent calendar. So I'll turn to Mr. Serna.
Thank you. The clerk could please read item 33.
Item 33 is the resolution of intention to purchase approximately 12.64 acres of vacant land located in the old Florintown Special Planning Area from the Farm to Future Associates Limited Partnership to facilitate a community park and urban farm. The environmental document is a notice of exemption.
Thanks. If I could have Chris probably approach the podium, please. Just a question about a statement made in the overview section of the board letter. Chris, it, let's see. It's about two-thirds of the way down. The first paragraph there says, "South Gate is in support of this recommendation and will develop a 2.31 acre public park. Parcel four is depicted in attachment two, and a 10.33 acre urban farm, parcel one, is depicted in attachment two, to serve as a project training center or another park." What is another park? What is, what's that reference? That's a little nebulous.
Yeah. I think we'd like to create some flexibility. I think the intent is for it to be a farm, a working farm, and also a training opportunity for the housing residents. There's still a lot of due diligence that needs to be done regarding the farm and that being a viable option for that site. And so we're creating, we plan on creating some flexibility in the conveyance agreement to South Gate that should a farm not be feasible on that site for one reason or another, that it could be developed as a park.
On that site?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then item 46, please.
Item 46, the timed item?
It's a timed item.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. We'll get to it in a moment. You okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Wheat didn't go anywhere.
No, he's not.
He has some consent and timed item, so, okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I did have just a couple of items I wanted to call out, on item 6 and 7, which are the extensions of the Declaration of Emergency based upon the flood events we had both in January and February. Would it be possible that we could get, maybe within, assuming you'll be back here in the next 30 days, to kind of get a point in time as to where we are in the claiming process? I know that as recently as last evening, I had a conversation with someone who, again, they're waiting to do some repairs, excuse me, it was yesterday morning, and, but, you know, they're waiting to hear from FEMA. It happens to be out of county, but on one of the JPAs I sit on, and so they're going to send their engineers out. But, you know, we're getting into the season when repairs can be made. So I, again, with some of the damages that occurred in this county, I guess I'm curious as to, you know, we don't control that, but, you know, what is, you know, the time expectation relative to either claims that have been submitted and whether they'll be paid on, whether they get authorized, and then so that people don't lose too much of their construction season if they have to actually do repairs, including us. You know, we're claiming for road damages and so forth. Can we go ahead and proceed with some of those repairs? You know, we continue to fill potholes, but if there's other repairs to be made. So I think it'd be helpful, maybe have a more comprehensive, without having a lot of extra work, to get some sense of where we are now. And again, if we need to, you know, weigh in with our representatives, certainly congressional representatives and/or the federal agencies to be of assistance, at least make sure we get attention, because we weren't the only area in California, obviously, or certainly in the United States that's been damaged this winter by, you know, a variety of weather types of activities. So I guess I would just ask that we have some sense about that, because we'll be into June by the time we get this for the next time and well into the construction season. One other item, if I could, and that would be on the item 23, which is the agreement on the red light photo enforcement program. Could we ask that we could have an annual report put at least on our agenda so we, again, I think it's important to see those statistics and, you know, I think the safer activity at those intersections where there had been a prevalence of accidents and so forth. And so I just think it's important for the public to track that, and we don't see this, I don't think we don't see those annual reports. The Sheriff's Department may see them, but I think it would be good for, if nothing else, on a consent item or information item to appear on the agenda. So as a part of that, if we could have, you know, an annual point in time as to, you know, the accidents and reduction in the number of accidents at those locations where we, 20, nearly two dozen-plus locations, I think it'd be important to have that. Okay. All right. And then last, I would just note that on item 29, we have, I see Ray Tretherway and some of the folks from Neighbor Woods Program here, and we have that on the consent calendar to continue to work with them on tree planting in our community. So I just want to acknowledge Ray and the folks that are with him, and we'll take action in just a moment as soon as I quit talking, so, okay? All right. Good. All right, Flo, anything else? All right. I had no one time to speak on any item on the consent agenda. Is there anyone here who wish to address any consent matter? All right. Then seeing none, a motion would be in order. Okay. It moved. Chair would second it to approve the consent calendar noting the items, and there does require a four-fifth vote on the item 11. So unless there's any abstentions or recusals, then we'll go ahead and vote this. So, all right, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you very much. And we'll go down to our presentations. We have several.
You sure do. For item 43, it's the presentation of resolution proclaiming May 7 through 13, 2017, Public Service Recognition Week in Sacramento County.
Okay. I think we have some folks here to receive that proclamation. I don't know if they're going to do any introduction. Is there any introduction on this? I'm going to have to hold this presentation. I had noted that we had some folks who represented one of our employee groups, I think from IT that were going to be here this morning to receive this. So maybe we can check and intervene any time, and I'll have my office check on that, Flo, and we'll come back to that, so, all right. Tell them we got a framed resolution for them, so it's here for it to get.
They've got to pick it up.
Okay, next then.
Okay. For your next item, 44, it's the presentation of resolution proclaiming May of 2017 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Sacramento County.
Okay. I believe.
I don't see the recipient here either. Is there anybody here from NAMI? I didn't think so.
Do I have to hold for a second?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll hold that. I see that Uma has her green scarf on, so if Uma or Sherry could receive this, but we, some of us have, all of us have our green ribbons on, so we'll come back to that one. So we're 0 for 2. We're 0 for 2. Let's see if we can get the third one here, so.
Let's try for item 45, which is a presentation of resolution honoring History Day awards.
I think we have folks in the audience for that, so, okay. Dr. Bob, you want to come forward and offer a little bit of background, and then I'll come down. I know we have students to recognize and we'll get into the presentation.
Thank you. I am Bob LaPerry, representing the Sacramento County History Day Committee. Sacramento County History Day held yearly in early March as part of the triad of California State History Day and National History Day. Winners at the county level progress to state, and state winners go to national. It is, for ease of description, the history counterpart of science fairs, which most people are familiar with, and it's organized by the Sacramento County Office of Education and the Center for Sacramento History through the History Day Committee. History Day is open to grades 4 through 12, with, in California, grades 4, 4th and 5 competing in a poster category. 6th through 12th grades compete in junior and senior divisions in one of five categories: performances, exhibits, websites, documentaries, or papers. And each year, a theme is determined that guides the topics that the students choose. The theme the students had to follow for this year was taking a stand in history. Their education in techniques such as proper researching through primary and secondary sources is an adjunct to the regular classes. In addition to the judging for progression to state and national, Sacramento County has a special awards program with a variety of organizations giving awards to stimulate and interest the students in aspects of history they may not generally think of or be aware of. It's always a real joy to see the enthusiasm of these students and the amazing quality of their projects. I encourage everyone to get involved with this wonderful program. Information can be found at sachistoryday.org. This year, there are 288 students involved with a total of 176 projects. The Board of Supervisors awards are in the special awards category, and this year, two projects will be presented a resolution from the board. I will introduce each project and the student or students involved. The first project was from Sacramento Country Day School and was a website entitled Edward Snowden, The Man Who Fought for Transparency, Privacy, and Liberty, and it was done by Allison Zhang, Alex Rogowski, and Yuza Mo. Unfortunately, two of those three are taking AP exams this morning.
I guess that's really fortunate if they're doing advanced placement, but they got able to be here, so.
And the third, the third had a conflict at the last minute, so I will take those resolutions and make sure that students receive them. The second project that's awarded is from Monterey Trail High School in Elk Grove. Again, it was a website entitled Enabling the Disabled: How the ADA Came to Be, and this was done by Annalisa Villoria, Tree Dao, Nicholas Lee, and Teresa Nguyen. And we have Tree and Teresa here today to receive their awards. The other two students, again, were scheduled this morning for AP exams, and we'll make sure that the other two students do get their resolution. And I thank you and thank the board very much for doing this on an annual basis.
Okay. Well, I'll come down and join you. We're delighted to have Teresa and Tree here with us. And certainly, Dr. Bob, I want to thank him for his good work over the years, certainly his tremendous interest in preserving local history and his work in that regard, but also, I think, in encouraging the generations that come behind us to get involved and to understand more about our community, about our world, and certainly about events that affect our lives in many different ways. And so certainly in Sacramento County History Day and all the activity that goes into that, working with our schools, with teachers, obviously, and parents, and the young people then who are engaged at various levels in their, in their school pursuits, really, I think, highlights some of the tremendous energy that they bring, and I think creativity in researching their projects. And then actually, these folks become researchers and go and learn more about the subject matter based upon the theme, and then put together projects. And today, we have some of the award winners here with us, and we just note that the, as Dr. Bob said, Enabling the Disabled: How the ADA Came to Be was a project that these two young folks, along with two of their colleagues, were involved in. And I'm going to invite them in a moment. Just tell us a little about your project, if you wouldn't mind doing that, and certainly recognize you. So I guess Teresa got tapped. Tree just gave her this, so. And so at any rate, I'll let them tell a little about the project, and then we'll do a presentation, so.
Thank you. Our project was a website on the ADA, which is the American with Disabilities Act of 1990. And previous to the project, we hadn't really known anything about disabilities, but engaging in the project, we were able to study both the social aspect of disabilities and how that hindered so many people from jobs and school and public accommodations, but as well as the political side with why we didn't have these laws to protect the people with disabilities. So it was a really great learning experience. Thank you.
Teresa, you want to add something?
I agree with you.
Well, that's good. And again, we appreciate your work, and again, I think both of you have certainly budding careers in, you know, whether it's in, you know, in the world of government, but certainly as you go on with your academic pursuits. So let me ask you, are you seniors, juniors?
We're juniors.
Seniors? And what are you interested in going into?
I'm still undecided.
I'm undecided, too.
Okay. Okay. Has this in any way affected you or your two fellow students as to maybe what your career pursuits might be when you're just studying this? Did that motivate you to want to do something in the area of disability rights?
I think for me, it's opened myself up to, I've never really been interested, I guess, in politics, and so now it gave me a new perspective on how politics helps society.
Okay. Very good. Very good. You agree with her, right?
I agree.
You got that line down well. Okay. Anyway, with that, I want to say congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Our special award winners, and certainly thank your teachers and, is this apparent with you?
That's our teacher.
Oh, well, come on up. My guy got the teacher right. Tell us who you are, and you got to tell us about your students. I didn't realize you were the teacher, so. Good morning.
Good morning.
Monterey Trail High School.
Good morning, everyone. My students have been working since last summer on their projects. They're quite shy. I'm sure if they were actually in the competition and in front of judges and giving the interview, they would be spewing an enormous amount of facts, as they usually do when I ask them questions about their project. They are labor intense, and they do take time and effort to learn the research, all of which are skills that they will greatly use at the university level. And while they are undecided in what they want to do, I am most thankful for the opportunity to have worked with them.
We thank you. Now, did they do a written presentation, or did you do a YouTube video, or what did you?
It's an actual website.
Oh, you actually do a website?
Yes. If you want the link, I'm sure you can just email me, and I will send you the link, and you can take a look and look at their work.
Broadcast that out so all of our viewers and TV link and if you want to.
Oh, sure.
What is your actual website?
There's a series of numbers that I do not recall. Okay. Well, I'll send you the link. You can email me.
You really want to know who they call it?
They, you can just email me at mfpoe@egusc.net.
Okay. Mfpoe, okay, very good. We thank you for your work and again for providing the guidance and the, I think, the leadership it takes to help inspire and motivate the young people who obviously took it upon themselves to do their work, but it takes a great instructor to do that as well. So we thank you and compliment you as well, so. Okay, well, we have proclamations for you, Teresa, and for Tree.
Thank you so much.
You bet. And then we have the extras for, I guess, the two students of Monterey Trail. So you can go back to them.
Thank you.
Day School, and if you want to take up a photo.
That'd be good.
Okay. So, you want to take a picture, Dr. Bob, first?
Yeah. Okay.
If you can turn this way if you'd like, and that way you can.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll just hold.
Good luck, and enjoy your summer to come, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll return to the, yeah, agenda. Did, Patrick, anybody from your group?
No. Mr. Chair, I still don't see the organization representative that was to be here. As we know, we have approved a resolution proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'll make sure that that gets to the individual and the organization. But in the meantime, we also have, I believe there's queued up in there, a short video.
Sure.
This is actually a short film. It was created by a Franklin High School student, Holly Chang. It's the Student Educational Video Awards 2017 Creative Expression winner, which was shown recently at a mental health board meeting and among other places, and so thought that the board would enjoy seeing the work by Ms. Chang.
Great.
[music]
Did you get one of these?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
And I believe I misspoke. I said Franklin High School, and I meant Florin High School. But I thought that was amazing work that was done, so.
You know, I, I would concur with you. I happened to be at the awards that evening and saw the young lady receive her award. And to think that, one, obviously, they picked the topic area, but then to take that to the creativity level, and I think to embody it with a message that is there, really says a lot about, obviously, the insightfulness, I think, of the, of the young person and her peers who put that together. But I, the message is there, you know, relates to, to stop the stigma, and certainly the efforts that are focused during the month that we recognized in the resolution. And Teresa, thank you, Patrick, for your leadership on the mental health board and, and others. And I don't know if Uma or either Sherry or Dr. Heller would like to come forward and offer any other words about activities, or you, Patrick, as well. I know that there's, I think, a session scheduled for this Saturday, and there are some other activities. And I think this young person certainly captured a lot of the sentiment as it relates to trying to overcome some of the mental illness challenges in our community.
Thank you, Supervisors. I don't have the full calendar of events in my head, and might need to rely on others for that. I do want to express the appreciation of the mental health board and the whole behavioral health team, staff, to the Board of Supervisors for this recognition. We're very proud of our anti-stigma work. We're very proud of that, of the fact that the project's working, and we've got good data to show that the participate, the people in our community are, are more supportive of their friends and neighbors and relatives with mental illness than they were even a few years ago. So, so we're thrilled with that. There are plenty of times when, when Psychowski and, and I have to come up here and talk to you about the fact that we need to spend more money, and that we may be over budget on certain lines with treating mental illness. And this is a chance to pause and look at it from the other side and say how great it is that more people are seeking help, and that they're willing to come forward and seek help for their family members and for themselves, and that it's not, and it's recognized as an illness, and it's not seen as a stigma. There's a lot of support, there's more insurance coverage, there's more Medicaid coverage, there's more understanding among law enforcement officers and others, that there are people out there who need help, and that their, their behavior is, is a symptom of illness rather than intent. So for all of those reasons, we're, we're, we're seeing more demand for our services, and this is an opportunity this month to say, okay, that's a good thing. That's really a good thing, and we're proud of the work that we do. Thanks for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Sherry, and thanks for the work, certainly of our professional staff, for their efforts to assist the community and certainly help direct resources in a manner it can best be used. But I extend our thanks to Ms. Chang, and, you know, might be that we would reach out to her, invite her to participate in some of the other activities. And I know with the Saturday focus, I think we have a, isn't there a mental health fair, Uma, on Saturday?
Yes.
The 13th? Maybe you can, yeah, maybe come up and, before we leave the topic here, and, and I don't know if it's too late to invite Holly to maybe join you, but it might be featured this there, and I'm not so sure she was, she was getting as much play with this, you know, airtime, but I think it's important because the message there, certainly for young people, but for, you know, people of different cultures, but just as human beings, the message is a really strong one in her, in her video, so.
It is on Saturday, so we have invited all the high school students to also join us. There is a fair, Living Wealth Expo 2017, which is the big fair that we are doing in Sacramento County, and it's in Maple, Maple Neighborhood Center, and I'll leave this for everyone. I think we've sent it to.
Yeah, but you can put it down right, and we can put it up on the, no, the other way. There you go, face up.
Oh, sorry.
And then they can zoom in on that a little bit.
Okay.
There he has the details, so.
We have, this is the fifth year that we are, we've been doing all the activities around prevention, and we have engaged a lot of our communities. So this has a lot of our, all our providers, a lot of community members present, so we really want to extend the invitation to everybody to attend. And, and there, there are just a lot of different places, high schools, community centers, health programs, that have been engaged by this program. So it'll be a really good fair, so we hope people can attend. Thank you very much for your support.
Yeah, thank you, Uma. Thanks for coming up and for putting the flyer up there for us, so. Okay, well, very good. And then, Mr. Kennedy will see to it that our recipients get the framed copy of the resolution, so. And thank NAMI for their work in, in our community as well. Okay, with that then, Flo, I think we'll move to the next agenda item, and we got a pretty full agenda here.
So it's okay to move to item 46? Okay. authorize the Director of Airports to execute the Scheduled Airline Operating Agreement and Terminal Building Lease between the County of Sacramento and the airlines operating at Sacramento International Airport and Mather Airports.
Good morning. The agenda item we have today is a culmination of a lot of work over the last few years. The, three years ago, three and a half years ago, we established several goals. One of those was to get our cost per plane passenger under $14. And the methodology we were using to, to, one of the methodologies we were using to get that, besides all of the cost-cutting measures that we've implemented to date, is to negotiate a new agreement with our air carriers where we could modify a few things within our rate methodologies to continue to bring their rates down. We also had the goal, going into this negotiation, to reduce the county's risk, to ensure that we had space guarantees over the term of the agreement, that we would, it goes a long ways in improving our airline relationships, and that it also required an action on Title 11, because currently Title 11 has all of our rate charges, which the board has taken action on earlier this morning. The next two slides really give you an idea associated with the business terms associated with this agreement. It's a five-year agreement that goes into effect July 1, 2017. It has a extension period, a five-year term extension, but it has to be mutual between all the parties. It provides for lease guarantees. What we mean by that is the air carriers sign up for space within the terminals, they sign up for that space for a five-year period, so if they're, they change, or they leave, or they need to size down, they still are on the hook for that space. It creates two types of air carrier rate charges. One is the signatory, and one is the non-signatory. I'll go into the benefits of the signatory, because they, they get a reduced rate. Well, they all get a reduced rate. And then the difference is if, if you do not wish to sign the agreement, then you'll be known as a non-signatory air carrier, and you'll pay a 20% premium. And what we do is we then issue an operating permit that has all of the insurance and all the liability requirements associated in that. It provides an extraordinary service protection. Currently, under the ordinance, if the county were to default on anything associated with any of our bonds, or find ourselves in a tough shape where we couldn't make payments, that's currently upon us. We're taking all of the risk. Under this agreement, what happens in that kind of a situation, if we run into a problem of not meeting our coverage, or not being able to pay our debt, the air carriers will then pick up that additional cost in operating and business until such time as we can repay them back into the future. So it is really a kind of a failsafe in reducing the risk. The space assignment and reassignment, the agreement basically, everybody chooses their space, they get their space. It also has the ability that if we need to reassign that space, or if they're not using that space to its maximum, we can put other carriers into that space so that we're going to maximize the utilization of our facilities. And finally, it has a majority and interest clause. And basically, what that is, is for certain types of capital improvement projects, if the air carriers, if 75% of the, or the carriers carrying 75% of the passengers have a problem with that project, they can basically disapprove it, which means we go back to the drawing board to discuss how we can reduce those costs, or how we can come up with a better solution. Ultimately, there's a timeframe on that, whether it's either 12-month or 24-month, depending on the size of the project. And then if we can't reach agreement, then the airport will just move ahead with the The rate methodology is very similar to the current ordinance. We have three types of space, same as we currently have today. The big, one of the big differences, we've incorporated what we're calling, what's called a rolling debt coverage in our industry. Currently, under ordinance, what we, we do is, carriers' rates are made up of two things. One are the operating expenses, and the second is the actual debt service we have to pay annually. So that's placed into the cost centers where the actual work was done. The air carriers participate in the airfield cost center, and they also participate in the terminal cost center. And then, as we're doing those rates, because we have to meet a 125 coverage under our indentures, we actually charge another 25% every year on that annual debt service. Under the new approach, what we do is, once they've paid that, the only amounts that go up and down are, as our debt goes up and down, then there's that small, small amount of money that will be added into their rates. They don't have to keep repaying that every, every single year. We're also entering into a revenue sharing program. That revenue sharing program is based upon passengers, not, not based upon what the airlines are paying. To encourage, you know, to encourage them to bring in the most passengers, you're going to get the largest rebates. One other change is on our common use fees. We used to charge those fees based upon what we call a two turns. You know, like a gate, for instance, we would divide the rate by two. Now we're dividing it by three, which is much more within the industry average. And I've already talked about the 20% rate premium. And then we continue the annual settlement, which we currently do today. That is, we do a true-up at the end of the year. If they owe us money, they pay us. If we owe them money, we write them a check. You've all seen this, I think, previously, as, but it basically, these are our five-year financial projections that we presented to the air carriers, that were presented, but were put together by our independent financial consultant, Ricondo and Associates. And you can see that revenues are increased, our expenses, we've, we had certain calculations associated with that, based upon, you know, increased cost and just the cost of doing business. And then it shows how we're, the rates, the process we go through, the methodology we use in determining what we call net remaining revenues. That net remaining revenue number is the number then that is split on the 60/40, and that would be given back to the air carriers in a rate, excuse me, in a rebate check. This is the slide that we're most proud of. As you know, we, it was a very large goal we set of getting these rates under $14. With the approval of this agreement, these are the projected rates that were presented to the air carriers. The budget that you're actually seeing, you're going to be seeing to be approved in the June timeframe, with a few tweaks that we've made with our expenses, those rates are now actually going to be for 2018. We're projecting those rates to be $13.55, which is even an improvement over what we showed the carriers before. And so that's, that's a huge, from our standpoint, that's a huge accomplishment, because what it does, it makes us competitive with other California airports. And finally, the debt service coverage forecast, currently in 2017, we're anticipating that to be 1.75 times debt service. It will go down a bit, because our rates and charges are going down a bit in the next year in 2018, under the new agreement. But then you can see it builds back up to 1.84 at the end of the first term of this agreement. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, and would request that you approve the agreement.
Okay. Thank you, John. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, John, for, for the, the oral report on this. I think it's clear that this is all good news, and you mentioned hitting the objective of getting to and below $14. I think that's, that's the showcase slide of your, of your set here, so I do appreciate that. My question for you has to do with the 20% premium for non-signatories.
Yes.
Is that, is that an industry standard?
The industry standard is anywhere from 20% to 50%, and so we're on the, we're on the low end of that. But there's, it's a standard simply because the carriers who are going to be signatory, they're, like you might say, they're putting skin in the game, because they're guaranteeing us revenue over that term of that agreement. And, and the way we've set this up is that every carrier, if they wish to be a signatory, they can come on, because the amounts, our, our carriers who only are using one flight a day, or two flights a day, if they wish to be signatory air carriers, the only thing they'd have to guarantee is a minimum, is a minimum amount of $250,000 a year. So we've got that threshold extremely low, but we'll leave it strictly up to those carriers, because some carriers just don't want to be a signatory carrier, because they want to have the flexibility to move in and to move out.
So my question is, what, what's the elasticity of that premium? I mean, if you were to, if you consider the floor 20% and the ceiling 50%, what's the sensitivity if you were to make it a 35% premium?
What that does is continue to, for those carriers that you're trying to attract in, new carriers, because as you all know, we have an incentive program that has, where we give out incentives for the first year if a new carrier comes in, or someone offers a new service. And the big, and the big incentive associated with that is landing fees. What we do is we waive landing fees. And so by having the percentage, the 20%, and then having, you know, they pay 20% more on their fees, but yet in the first year, they're going to get this incentive, which is going to bring them below what the regular rates would be, we still have an incentive to bring new carriers in here to hopefully start service. And if they're successful here, then they can make a choice. Do I want to be signatory or not be signatory?
So anything above 20% at this point, you think we risk keeping interested new airlines from, from looking at us?
Especially your low-cost carriers, which are the ones, you know, we're courting now, you know, the spirits, the, you know, the allegiance, the frontiers.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Thanks for the report. I don't have any time to speak on this item, so.
I'd like to move the item.
Okay. Let's move a second to approve the item as outlined in the recommendation. If there's nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Call the next item, please.
Okay, for item 47, please note for the record that you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Sacramento Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing for the Kensington Apartments.
Okay, I would just note, too, I know we're going to have staff for presentation here, but if there's anyone who wishes to address this, I would ask you, please fill a speaker identification form, we'll call upon you as we get into this item, because I know there's the applicant under the TEFRA hearing that's here as well, so. All right, you going to introduce the item then? Your?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, and members of the board, Ann Nichols, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency.
Excuse me, can you arrange the platform so you can speak into the microphones? I can't hear a word you're saying.
Okay.
Okay, go closer. Okay. Good morning, Chair Natoli, and members of the board, Ann Nichols, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you outlines the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA, hearing related to the proposed construction and permanent financing of Kensington Apartments, and the issuance of 38 million tax-exempt bonds by California Statewide Communities Development Authority, or CSCDA. This is the first time in many years staff has brought forward a project for which the housing authority was not the bond issuer. The policies approved by the Board of Supervisors state that in limited situations, the agency will allow other issuers, such as CSCDA. In this case of this project, the developer has told the agency that they have a master agreement with CSCDA to issue tax-exempt bonds for the projects throughout the state, and using the same financing team will provide them with cost-saving. As for background of this project, the agency staff has worked in close coordination with the developer throughout our due diligence process. Staff met with the developer last fall to explain our application requirements. We received an incomplete application in December, but engaged frequently with the development team in an effort to gather required documentation. Agency staff has made two site visits, met with the developer and county supervisor, communicated regularly via phone and email to process our underwriting. Kensington is an existing 301-unit mixed-income development in the Arden Arcade area. Four of the 24 buildings were built in 1964, and the rest of the buildings were built in 1984. The project was rehabilitated in 1992, when the housing authority issued bonds, and there have been limited renovations over the last 10 years. Proposed exterior rehabilitation includes new roofing, photovoltaic solar systems, paint on stucco buildings, thermostats and condensers throughout the property, interior paint and flooring in common areas, and an upgrade to one of three elevators. There will be limited fence repair, irrigation, and landscaping. The agency's construction staff was not able to fully confirm that the proposed scope of development and construction budget meet the agency's construction standards per the multifamily lending and mortgage revenue bond policies. However, the developer has assured staff that they are committed to completing all rehabilitation needs. It should be noted that since the agency will not be the issuer, staff from the agency will not be providing onsite inspections to ensure the rehabilitation is completed as described, and will not be monitoring the project's physical condition. as described, and will not be monitoring the project's physical condition or resident files annually. As detailed in the staff report, the relocation plan is incomplete, and the resident services agreement is short of hours. Klein Financial Corporation is an experienced developer with over 14,000 mixed-income units in three states, including over 10,000 units in California. Alliance Residential Company has been the property management company at Kensington since 2010, and will continue to provide property management services for the developer. The project will be financed with a 4% low-income housing tax credit, tax-exempt bonds, market-rate equity, net operating income during construction, and a deferred developer fee. Staff has expressed concerns regarding the terms of the non-amortizing senior loan. In closing, the developer is requesting approval to move forward with a TEFRA hearing related to the proposed financing of Kensington Apartments. Bob Klein and Chad Lewis from Klein Financial Corporation are available to address any questions you may have.
Okay, and thanks for the presentation. Standby for a second. Let's see if we have questions. I know that we'll certainly want to hear from the applicant on this, but let me turn to colleagues. Any questions of staff at this juncture?
I'd like to hear from the developer before we get into questions. I'd also like to ask our presenter, did you read the letter that Klein Financial Corporation sent on April 18th?
Yes, I did.
That contradicts several of the things you said?
Yes, I did. I read those. And what we find is the information we have received versus what was in that letter is not completely accurate.
Give me some examples.
For example, the relocation plan.
Please speak up.
For example, for example, the relocation plan. In the relocation plan, we have a third-party consultant review of the developer's relocation plan that's included in their application. And they will list off some items that are missing based on the funding source requirements, in this case, state and local. There were a number of items that were requested, and it was not included between the exchanges from the agency and the developer.
Don't say a number of things. Tell me exactly what they are.
For example, the 30-60-day notices, advisory time, services. I'm going to have to, excuse me, a second. Okay, so the missing items was information regarding advisory services, timeline, per diem allowance, 30-60-day notices, or an action plan to address potential temporary relocation for those residents who may have allergies or other medical conditions that prevent them from living in their units during construction. And yes, the letter did state that we received that information, but that is not accurate.
Okay. I'm looking at the letter, and it states that they're going to do what is required.
The letter.
The April 18th letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I was just pointing out to her.
Good morning. I'm Laura Christine Weickert from SHRA. I think that this is a very good example.
Can you please speak up?
Maybe this isn't working, because that's not, I think this is a good example of what's happened a lot with our communication with the developer. They absolutely have put in writing in letters, in narratives, in emails, the fact that they are absolutely committed to doing all the things we requested. But what we do is, we actually look at what's submitted. We actually look at the relocation plan. And the relocation plan is not complete. However, the developers have said they will complete those things. So the plan, we would like an expect, because it's one of our requirements, that a plan be written that attaches all those documents that Ann just read off. But they have said that they will make sure those things are done in a narrative, that's for sure. It just wasn't in the plan.
And why doesn't this letter become part of the plan?
It's not signed.
Excuse me?
The letter is not signed. Well, relocation plan is just like any other plan. It is a standalone document that is reviewed, as Ann said, by an independent consultant. So, it should have just, it probably would have been, you know, a technical matter, maybe, to just update that plan and resubmit it to us. But it was not ever updated. It's an actual standalone plan. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's what it is, a standalone plan.
Are you saying that the letter stating all the things they're going to do is not an enforceable document?
I'm stating those are actual items that should have been included and attached or in a relocation plan. They were not. And then we would have, our process is, we get the initial plan, we send it to a consultant, they review it, they provide information back to us, the staff, of what needs to be included. We send it back to the developer. The developer updates their plan. We then send it back to our consultant one last time for final approval. And usually, that's the end of it. What happened was, we never got a revised plan back. And Ann's just stating that.
Okay. Now, one of the, I think, difficult things about this project has been that it's getting state funding. We're not funding it. So, explain how much authority we do or don't have over improvements to be done.
So, the Board of Supervisors holds the TEFRA hearing, the tax, I have a, Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing. You, as a local body, do that. That is what you're doing today. If you find that this is a project that should receive bond financing, then you will pass that resolution. That resolution is then included in the application to the state, the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee, and the project proceeds through the application and approval process. If the board does not approve that TEFRA hearing, then the application cannot be submitted.
What does the state do with the resolution and all the information coming in about what improvements will be made?
For the TEFRA resolution, they just want to make sure the local jurisdiction has approved this bond issuance, that they've reviewed it and approved it. It's just one of many, many, many items that is submitted as part of the application. And they will do their due diligence to see if the project has included everything you need for bond issuance.
So, do they have requirements about what needs to be improved, like SHRA does?
They're not as stringent. They just have a bottom line per unit number of $15,000 requirement. You cannot get a bond approved without $15,000 per unit in rehab.
So, do they read the reports that you've written about the things that need to be done and the letters that have been submitted?
So, what happens is, the applicant does not submit, the developer does not submit the application to the state, is actually the bond issuer. So, when we're the bond issuer, we put all the information that we have found and all the things that we have verified with them that are going to be done to the property in our application to the state. I assume CSCDA will do that in this case. I don't know what CSCDA will put in their application. I know what we would have put in if we were applying, but I assume they will go by what the developer's saying they'll do.
That's all I have for the moment.
Okay. All right, stand by. Supervisor Serna, and I have some questions soon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is less than optimal, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing a number of things over the last, less than a week, week's time, about not only this project, but the nature of a very tight housing market, the nature of, in some cases, tighter multifamily housing market, and that gauged against the other very complex effort underway to prioritize vouchers for chronically homeless folks. And what's unfortunate, or less than optimal about all this, is I'm hearing different things. First of all, correct me if I'm wrong, the commission itself had four abstentions on this?
Three or four, yes.
Okay, that's pretty odd. That begs a bigger question for a different day about decision-making on that commission. But to me, that's the first element that makes this kind of strange. And then I think I'm hearing, while they have communicated, that is, the developer has communicated a willingness to provide the information that has been requested, it just has not manifest itself in the form that the agency requires, which is in a quote-unquote "plan." Now, is there any, based on what you just said, Christine, about the fact that what gets submitted to the state, which is from us, not the developer directly to the state, is there an opportunity, based on the commitment from the developer to provide the information that has been requested in the form of a plan, to have that information, you know, I guess, reprocessed in the form that SHRA needs it in, between now and the time that it would be submitted to the state?
So, I just want to be clear. While the relocation plan was inadequate, there was other information that we just didn't receive, so we'd have to receive some of it. But because the application is due Friday, and your hearing is today, unless the developer requested it, we submit the application at the next round, which is in two months, I think it would not really be possible. You're hearing it today, so there's really not an opportunity with a Friday application.
Meanwhile, we exacerbate the problem of investment in these types of projects, which I think anyone would be hard-pressed to argue we don't need more of everywhere in the county. We've got 2% vacancy rates, which, you know, I don't remember ever seeing around here. At the same time, we see rents taking a trajectory that keeps a lot of folks out of, certainly out of homeownership, but even some out of, you know, being able to afford an apartment these days. So, the last thing I want to be part of is a decision that is going to exacerbate that problem, especially when we're embarking on this whole new effort to creatively use our vouchers, which will necessarily require the participation of multifamily operators because of process. When we have, at least, we have some commitment that the information that is requested is going to be provided. That's the last thing I want to be part of. And I'll leave my comments there right now.
Okay. I know Supervisor Frost wants to weigh. I did want to just, while you're there, Christine and Ann, that, and I had a chance to talk with the applicant representatives, Mr. Klein and others, yesterday. Certainly had a chance to brief with staff about this. And I'll just say, and I said it to them, and I'll say this very publicly, that in my years as a member of this board, we've had a number of TEFRA hearings, but rarely have ever have I seen a report that, you know, at least from staff, that reflected, I think, the level of concern that was expressed here, recognizing there's been, since the time, I guess, this was prepared, there's been some additional dialogue. But I think, obviously, in doing the due diligence that we require our staff, and you're acting upon direction that was given some 25 years ago, I believe now, if I'm not mistaken, 1992 was, you know, some of this was set in motion, maybe been some amendments to that relative to what certainly this community, through its representatives and Board of Supervisors, expectations are as it relates to certainly rehabilitation, but the construction of projects, and also the conduct as it relates to if there are work that has to be done relative to relocation, certainly services to be provided. So, again, you're not acting in a vacuum. And I think what wasn't captured in the staff report, and I too have read the letter from Klein, that pointed out, you know, some of, at least from their perspective, not only some of the meetings that occurred with Supervisor Peters, but with SHRA staff and other principals in this. And I guess the concern that I have is that, again, we have a short timeframe. Obviously, you've been working with that, so has the developer and the applicant here. And that certainly crunches it now, when it gets to us on this date, because there's very little time, unless there was a delay, that then could put, I guess, some of the financing in jeopardy, that allows for very much back and forth here today in this hearing. But I guess I would say that I think the process, to the degree that it's been frustrating probably from both sides, and I think staff, when I read through the report here, and I see in the statements, and if it was subsequently provided, then it was, or if it was provided and it wasn't acknowledged, but when you say that staff was not provided documentation, and haven't conducted, and, you know, the developer says that we hope it's going to be this and so forth, those are words that get my attention. Again, I've read enough reports, and as do my colleagues, I'm sure. And, you know, this is not negative in that sense, but it certainly leaves those gaps. And I think the assurance is that we turn to you, obviously, in working with the parties that come before us, to provide the assurance as one that improvements that are being stated are going to be made, that they're going to have a useful life. And I related this to the parties yesterday, that, you know, we've had projects that, you know, were built in the 80s, or back in the 90s, looking to do rehabs because of, you know, the insufficiencies of either products or the construction techniques, or sometimes, you know, forces beyond the control of anybody. But that's one of the reasons we had that. And I think you spoke to that earlier, you and responding, that the state doesn't have the same. You know, they call for a certain investment, but we called it out, we want warranties. It sounded to me like, though, some of that information has been provided subsequently, and, you know, during this intervening period of time. And that's my question. So, whether it's embodied in a plan or not, has subsequent information that's been provided, Christine and Ann, has that addressed some of these gaps as it relates to your analysis or not? I guess that's what I want, kind of my bottom line, I want to know that, so.
Right. So, honestly, we received that memo, I think, the morning of our commission meeting, which was about three weeks ago. We did make adjustments to our staff report after receiving that memo. For example, one of the things that we had as an incomplete item was some of the property management information. They did, because of that memo, they did submit those pieces that we were missing, and then we removed that from your staff report. But I would just say, Supervisor Natoli, that we do have very standard guidelines we give to all developers, and we review all projects exactly the same way before we bring them to you, based on the guidelines the board approved. They were last updated in 1999. But they are pretty rigorous. I will admit, they're more rigorous than some jurisdictions, and definitely more than the state, probably. But that is because we have received feedback from this board in the past, wanting to make sure that if improvements are made to affordable housing developments, that they last a minimum of 15 years, and that the property's going to be well-managed, well-run, services are provided as needed, and things like that. So, we do just try to go by these guidelines. We're.
Good. You know, I would just point out, and it's actually in Klein's letter, and I guess it's a positive in a sense, but I think it goes to the process that's utilized, as frustrating as it may be, and/or, you know, when it gets here, you know, what that embodies as far as the recommendation. But in their letter, they said that the staff report properly stated there was no playground equipment to be installed, but as reflected in their current budget scope, this is the April 18th lever, so that's obviously been addressed, but it says, "With the finalization of the budget, the developer has now identified that playground equipment can be afforded, and it should be installed." They provided attachment, and they say, "Frankly, this element should have been initially included in comparable equipment, as shown in this picture, will be installed." To me, that says the process works, certainly on behalf of the developer, but on behalf of staff. That's, you know, in this give-and-take and back-and-forth, recognizing that there are budgets, there certainly are drivers behind the financiers, as well as, obviously, the constructors and rehabilitators, but certainly from the agency standpoint. And to me, that's how this should work. And, you know, in a far-from-perfect world, it's not going to be exactly what everybody wants. But that does say to me, certainly, I think that the process, as frustrating as it may have been, is that, you know, and I use that as one example, but it was one, obviously, the developer pointed out, but, and you just pointed out another one, where information subsequent to that was submitted. So, I've gotten a little better level of confidence, just in the last, I'd say, last 24 hours, as it relates to this, certainly having read your staff report, having met with the parties, and hearing discussion here this morning. But I think your thoroughness is, you know, is reflective, obviously, with the direction you receive from this board over time. And I think working with individual members of the board, and certainly other staff, try to get to a point where people find that, you know, a point where people can be satisfied on both sides of the equation, and projects can move forward. Because I think to Supervisor Serna's point earlier, that we do have a deficit. Your agency knows that as well as anybody else. And when you're trying to preserve 61 units of affordable, and have it within the market rate complex. I would just say that, to me, is important. This member of the board has spoken about it over more than 20 years, when we had projects that were controversial, and actually turned down a TEFRA back in the late 90s, because we had this debate about, you know, trying to get some market rate inserted into affordable projects. And so, here you have one that has those elements. And so, it may affect the assignment of costs, and affect the improvements, and, you know, what goes in and so forth. And yet, you have that mix that I think is so important from a social standpoint, but certainly from a standpoint of livability and the quality. certainly from a standpoint of livability and the quality of amenities, because you have, you know, 100, you know, or 200 and something units, that basically folks can make a choice here and now, to go down the street or go somewhere else, and the affordable units, folks a lot of times are, you know, on a kind of a very narrow precipice anyway, and so they may feel a little more stuck, but you have that ability built into this project, which I think is, you know, important. And again, that may be reflected, obviously, in some of the back and forth that has caused frustration on both sides, so I just wanted to point that out, so.
And I'm going to ask for privilege.
Okay.
To my district. I think the biggest problem for me, because we've been working on this for six months with redevelopment agency and the developer, is that it's going through the state, and according to SHRA, we allowed that at some point in our history and in our policies. And if I understood Ms. Dozier, we could take that out of our policy, so that we didn't get in the situation where the state can issue bonds on a project, that we don't have the ability to require certain improvements made, we have to go on hope and faith. And maybe that's something we should discuss in a board meeting, whether we want to do that anymore. That doesn't apply to this one, but it's, certainly, it's difficult for the developer who is trying to please two masters, if you will, and it's difficult for us, because at our level, we're used to having more authority to require certain improvements, and this kind of limbo land that we're in is difficult on everyone. And I'd like to have that discussion and see whether that's something we want to continue to do, particularly since we, through the redevelopment agents, through the housing agency, sorry, I keep mixing them there, you know, we're charging fees for something that we're allowed to do, but if we're going to charge a fees, it seems like we ought to be able to put a bow on it, and know that we're going to get what we need to improve the housing stock to our requirements, as rigorous as they are, and maybe we need to look at those too, and see whether we're being too strict, or not too strict. I don't know, but that's been my difficulty all the way through this, is who, what agency are we trying to adhere to, agency rules that we're trying to adhere to, so, kind of.
Okay, no, that's good.
I didn't mean to interrupt Sue, I just, it was his point there, and I wanted to.
Yeah, good point.
Bring it up.
Okay, we can certainly bring that back at a future date to have that broader conversation, so. Okay, without them, we'll go to Supervisor Frost.
My question, well, there were a couple of my questions relating to the requirements that SHRA has placed on the developer, and so, and I want to make sure I understand this, that if we release this to the state, they're not necessarily going to ensure that our requirements are met, or the inspections, because they're listing in the letter here eight different levels of inspection, that's going to ensure that they are compliant in all these areas. Does this, if we were to take this letter and attach it as an addendum to their application, and then on Friday, when it's submitted, will the subsequent inspections and follow-up ensure that our requirements as a county are met, and that those that were agreed are met?
Yes, sure, let me try to answer that. So, just to be clear, there's sort of two state, one, a statewide entity, CSCDA, who would do the issuance instead of SHRA, or the Housing Authority, and then there's the state agency that oversees bonds, so there's sort of two, one statewide agency, and then the actual department under the Treasurer's Office of the state. So, the Department, the Treasurer's Office of the state, they do a paper review of our application, and then their board either approves or disproves the bond issuance, and they're pretty much done. CSCDA, who would take the place of the Housing Authority in this situation, would continue, of course, on with the developer, and making sure that all the financing came together, and then they would do, I know this because we've done a recent report about other issuers, they do, for example, every three years, they'll look at the files at the property to make sure that income-qualified people are living there. How that differs from the agency is that if we were issuing the bonds, we would go out there to the property annually and do a physical inspections, and we'd look at the project's files annually. Who else goes out there? The list, physically, the only other entity that would go out there after construction is done. Of course, during construction, a lot of the banks will go out there, making sure their money is being used correctly, and inspect, but after construction was done, the tax credit staff goes out to a property every three years. So, there would be tax credit staff out at the property every three years, but that would be, that would be it.
So, my background is residential finance and developments and construction financing, and the contract is the basis for, by which the lender, everything goes based on the contract. So, my assumption is that the bond holder and everything that follows would ensure follow-up on that. You're saying it's not necessarily to the standard that Sacramento County is asking, and then my question, then, the question that comes to my mind, and I'm hearing this more than once, not just in this situation, that Sacramento County's fees, in this situation, my understanding is that our fees are like 300% of what the state is. Our fees are much higher, and that our processes are more onerous, and so if we're wanting to encourage affordable housing and encourage projects like this, I just, I'm asking, I'm just asking, are our fees higher than a lot of other counties, and why are our fees so high, if that's the case?
Sure, let me try to answer that. Let me amend my previous statement. I realize sometimes the tax credit investor will go out to the property from time to time, look at it if need be to, so I just want to mention that, with people going out to the property. So, there are two fees associated.
I mean, those high fees are the reason people are wanting to go around us, right? Because if it was easy and cost-effective, everyone would just say, "Let's go to Sacramento County, they'll get it done fast, and it'll be reasonably priced."
Well, let me just start by, this developer, developers have talked to me about our fees in the past, absolutely, if they want fees reduced, and I can give you an example of one of the projects we're working on in the city, but right now, we did reduce those fees. But this developer never approached us and said that it was a fee issue. They have always maintained with staff that it's because they have this agreement with CSCDA to be the issuer statewide, and they wanted to continue that same team. So, I'm not aware that the fees are the issue, but I did, because I was curious, just last night, looked at our fees here versus the statewide issuer, CSCDA. I found, there are two fees, one fee charged by all issuers, whether that be LA City, or San Francisco, or the statewide issuers. One is a fee you pay at issuance, and then the other one is a fee you pay annually to monitor. When I looked at our issuance fee and how it's calculated compared to the one that CSCDA is requiring, they're very similar. I think CSCDA is like $87,000, and ours is $95,000, so it's a little different, but not too much. The monitoring fees at face value, yes, our monitoring fees are, CSCDA's, I think, will only be $19,000 a year, if I calculate it correctly, and ours would be more. However, and if I had known that that was the issue, I would have gladly talked to the developer about it, but.
How much more? How much more?
For, so our guidelines are for 100% affordable units, and so CSCDA, again, just doing their desk audit every three years versus what we do, would only charge 19,000, and we would charge 57,000, so quite a bit. But that's for a 100% affordable development. We are doing a project right now, who did ask for reduction in their fees in the city, that's only 20% affordable, it's 800 block of K, and we said, "You know what, we're only going to charge you 20% of our fees," that will be before the city council next week. If we had known this developer had an issue with our fees, we would have charged only 20% of our fees as well to them, I'm assuming, that's what I think we would have done, which would have been $11,000, so much cheaper than the $19,000 that.
And are our inspections more frequent?
Oh, yes, we do it every year.
So, our fees are higher, and our inspections are more frequent?
Right.
You say, once a year versus every third year?
They do, they do file reports every three years, only, look, they never go out to the property to physically inspect it. We go out to the property and physically inspect, and do files annually.
And those annual inspections are consistent with what everyone else in the world is doing?
Our annual inspections, it depends, we can get you a report, I think we might have provided some board earlier this last month, we can provide it again. Some jurisdictions go out as needed, some go out annually, it really varies, it depends on the governing body, you know, all the largest jurisdictions, like Sacramento, issue bonds, and they only, they all have their own monitoring requirements.
Okay, so then, just finally, it kind of looks like this letter that was presented to us addresses a lot of the deficit that the, in the staff report, the incomplete items in the staff report, and so, does it address everything? I'm not sure I got, I know Chair Nativi asked, but I'm not sure I understood. Does this address everything, and can we include this as an addendum that would complete their application and ensure that the county gets what we want, and that you can, that they can submit an application to the state by Friday?
So, what, the big part of what we do when it comes to the budget, is we look at what budget is submitted, based on the work that's needed, and then we can say if that's enough money to do that. What the disconnect here, the big disconnect in this project is, we're not exactly sure what's being done for the money, the budget they're proposing. For example, we asked for a unit-by-unit assessment of what needed to be done in the units, we weren't provided that.
Unit-by-unit of the affordable units, or the market?
All of the units, because they, because what they submitted to us, Supervisor, was that they were going to rehab 301 units, so it was all of it, and they gave us the number for how many cabinets would be replaced, and how many tub surrounds would be replaced, and all these things for 301 units. And when we looked at what they were budgeting for a unit, times 301, it wasn't enough money. But so then they came back, and they said, "No, no, no, we're going to do fewer, we're only, you know, we did some before, so we're only going to do like half of those now, or we're going to do them as needed." So, we said, "Okay, well, we just really want to make sure there's enough money set aside for each line item. Can you please tell us, give us a revised scope, and tell us exactly what you're going to do, how many units, especially if you go..." It became clear, I don't think they had a unit-by-unit inspection, and so it was, we did, never got, sort of, be able to reconcile, you know, reconcile the amount of what exactly was going to be done for the budget that was proposed. I will absolutely agree that they have told us in writing that they will take care of it. What our construction staff wasn't able to verify, is there enough money in their budget to do all the work they're proposing?
Okay, that's all for now, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Peters?
Follow-up to something Supervisor Frost brought up, if the state fees are 50,000 and ours are 19,000, agreed the work level is different, I think I heard you say that if you'd known that was an issue, you would have lowered your fees. My question is, why does someone have to ask?
Because our policies are written for 100% affordable developments. I would say.
Well, but your policy should also say, if it's not 100% affordable, then we will lower our fees.
I agree, and next time we revise it, we will, these haven't been updated since 2009, we've been trying to update them since then, but I will, I will say that it is rare, very rare, that we see 20% affordable. I don't know the percent in our portfolio, maybe 5% of affordable developments are like that.
But if the policy said X dollars per affordable unit, that would kind of clear up the confusion.
And maybe we should make that change. If I, again, if I had been approached and said that it was our fees, I would have tried, we could have talked about some of the fees, but, but we generally go by the fees.
Can we change that in this hearing? Are we allowed to change that in this hearing, Ms. County Council?
We won't be charging those fees, because they're going, they want to use another issuer, so it's, they would like to use CSCDA.
Okay, this is not the fee that you're, that you are charging?
No, this is the monitoring fee we're talking about. So, we will not be charging that fee.
How many projects are there in this county of Sacramento that are this kind of project that are financed by the state? I think the previous speaker said very few.
By CSCDA, the statewide issuer of bonds?
Are there others that finance them?
In the last 15 years, there have been two that I know of. Those two were done, both done in 2011, that's because the statewide issuer, same issuer, CSCDA, had some ARA funds, which were the, you know, Economic Recovery Act funds, the federal government, and it was really hard to get loans, so that issuer had received some of these ARA funds to create their own loan pool, and so we absolutely brought, both projects were in the county of Sacramento, so we brought those before the board, and we absolutely recommended that in that case, since they could access this other funding source, that it would be beneficial to the project to go with another issuer. But again, those are the only two I can think of, at least in the last 15 years that we've done.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think that's covered the questions, so thank you, Christine, thanks, Anne, and with that, I don't have the speaker for him, but I invite Mr. Klein or his colleagues to come forward, and please put your name on the record, if you would, and turn it over to you.
My name is Robert Klein, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the supervisors, for the privilege of addressing you.
Mr. Klein, I'm sorry, raise the podium, I have a cold, and my ears are blocked, and I'm having a horrible time hearing people. There we go, that'll probably help you.
Yes, is that better?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. So, it's a privilege to address you, and hopefully I will provide some information that will be positive for you, and understanding that the state does, in fact, have some very strict standards, 20-year useful lives, not 15, that are required and enforced by the Tax Credit Agency of the state, the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. But I want to start by thanking Supervisor Peters and her Chief of Staff, Howard Schmidt, for working with us, and working with SHRA to bring closure to a number of these issues. A number of the points that we had provided documentation in a meeting in Supervisor Peters' office, including warranties for 20 years on the roof system, 50-year warranties on the vinyl system, 20-year warranties on the windows, all as required under the tax, state tax credit agency, not 15 years, have not been reflected in the report. But we think that there is a number of people that were processing information, and perhaps, even though they were submitted multiple times, some of this wasn't captured. It is important to thank SHRA, because their staff does bring things to your attention that we tried to adopt and respond to, like the last American pain on the STUCO, that is an issue brought up in Supervisor Peters' office, so we went over every issue. We have submitted backup bids, actual bids, on 87% of the line item costs, to provide assurance that, in fact, we can build it for the line item budget, and those bids are in the possession of the construction staff. I'd like to just.
I'm sorry, Mr. Klein, those, the construction staff of SHRA or of the state?
Of SHRA, of SHRA. And we have indicated to the issuer, CSCDA, that it's our understanding that they're going to submit to the state as part of our package, the report of SHRA, and our response, and our backup documentation, so the state will have all of this. But again, the state standards are 20-year warranties on all of these major systems, not 15. So, the, if for a context, could we just show the pictures of the project, so individuals have a context for the project? So, the first picture, obviously, is just the entry. Can we go to the next picture?
You have a clicker?
I think you have to do that, yeah.
Okay. It didn't go forward. It's not working. Well, maybe I can proceed and they can see if we can get to the pictures. We have some.
Don went to see if we could get it fixed.
Control room's going to get under control.
Okay, thank you very much.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. This is the community building. I guess the control room will need to move forward every picture.
No, just say next picture and they'll handle it in the TV studio.
Next picture? Okay, this is another shot of the community building. This is an interior of a unit. Next picture. Another unit interior. Next picture. Exterior, there's two types of buildings, one with vinyl siding and that was replaced in 2010. Nine and 10 with a 50-year warranty under the Calpers partnership that we were the managing partner of. Next picture. This is Ed Jim on the site. Next picture. Pool, next picture. And there's three pools on the property. But they're beautiful grounds, very inviting for families, lots of mature trees with 80% market rate, 20% affordable, hopefully creating a very good environment. But in addressing the issues that were raised, it's, it's very important to realize that the, there are multiple levels of inspections that are required. The Tax Credit Allocation Committee in fact has a consultant that reviews the submissions to make sure, and staff reviews them to make sure that you can meet the 20-year sustainable life, which Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Frost mentioned. It is very important to understand that when you do your construction completion, before you can get your tax credit certificates, your 8609s that give the investors their first payback on those tax credits, there's an inspection to make sure you actually did what you said you were going to do. And that goes beyond the major building systems. It looks at appliances. You have energy standards, you have, energy standards to comply with on your appliances. You have building systems that you have to comply with. And in responding to questions from supervisors, staffs, I think that it's clear as well as in our representations, as well as in the submissions we've made to the agency, including in Supervisor Susan Peters' office, that even though in 2010, there are six roofs that were replaced, we are replacing all of the roofs. We are replacing every roof to make sure that we have 20-year lives to meet the TCAC state standards. So that's a demonstration that even if something has been replaced in a reasonably recent time period, you have to meet that 20-year standard and we're, we're conforming to that. It is very important to understand that we did put in writing to the agency that the fees were a problem and how they were affecting our evaluation and how they were affecting our equity. And I'm sorry if it went to a member of the staff that is not speaking today, but we can provide that documentation historically. It is a very constructive proposal that I just heard being made. I think it'll help with more production of mixed-income affordable housing, which has some very good social consequences for the, for the residents. On the relocation benefits, the agency's policies specifically say, if you're receiving agency money, you conform to the agency's form guidelines. It says if you're receiving benefits from other state or federal agencies, you conform to their relocation guidelines. We have, we're conforming to the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee relocation policies. We have met, we will meet and have to meet every standard of, of those and we're subject to enforceability under that. In addition, it's important to note that we have tried and put in writing a response to every specific question on notices, on paying for moving costs, for paying for packing costs. All of those are state regulatory requirements under the Uniform Relocation Act. We have to do that to be able to do this financing. It is a requirement of the regulatory agreement of the state. So if we're getting tax credits, there are many layers of oversight. As the speaker from SHRA said, as Christine said, not only do you have Deutsche Bank, who will be looking at this and doing inspections, we have 25% equity. So the investors themselves have inspectors. The tax credit investors on the tax credit side have, as she referenced, will come out and do inspections. But again, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee will inspect your plans for sufficiency for meeting all their standards and then before you can actually get your tax credits, they will make sure you have complied or they will not issue your tax credits. So we have governmental oversight, banking oversight, investor oversight, as well as the normal building permit oversight. There were, it is important however to say, we have tried to listen to the residents on the relocation plan. And so, we think we're going beyond the relocation requirements. We know we're going beyond the relocation requirements even under SHRA because we're doing a non-displacement program. Residents don't like their keepsakes packed up, their kitchenware's packed up, their clothes packed up, their furniture packed up and moved offsite. It's easier for contractors. It's a standard contractor request. We're doing renovation in place. The firm we're using has done 9,000 units. We gave the agency five different cities and projects where it's been, where as examples to inspect. My understanding is that they reviewed that. We've never heard any issue with any of those projects. We've used them. It's important if you ask a resident, they want to live in their unit, they don't want to be moved out. We give them an option to move to renovated unit if they want to change their unit location. They want their unit. They want it to be near the pool, near the parking. So we're trying to listen, trying to innovate, trying to create a higher standard of non-displacement. And that's the program that we proposed and we will be under the Uniform Relocation Act and under enforcement by the state. So with those points, I would like to say that everyone contributes to preserving affordable housing, but Calpers here are agreeing to, if we can get the bonds done to, and the tax, that come with the tax credits, they're agreeing to sell this project and held on to try and honor a legislative mandate to try and preserve affordable housing. I really appreciate them staying with us for nine months while we went through this process. Preserving those affordable housing is critical. We've been doing that for 40 years. We've been doing it for 16 years on every Calpers project we've been involved with. And it is a very difficult time for residents of this county. I don't, well, we would only be involved with being able to preserve affordable housing. It's our whole career, our history, starting with legal aid at Stanford Law School and working with the state legislature on establishing the Housing Finance Agency in California. So I would just like to say I'm open to any other questions, but we really do appreciate everyone's participation and we think the recommendation that SHRA just made about adjusting fees for, for projects with 20% affordable or other, or income-integrated projects is very constructive.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, for your presentation. Anyone else from your team you wish to address or, if not, we'll take any questions from board members, Mr. Klein?
No, we're just open for questions.
Okay.
I have a quick comment. Mr. Klein, I just wanted to remind you, our discussion about the P-bid that's getting underway there and your discussion about getting involved in that.
Yes, and we're, Chad Lewis is now a member of that committee. He is, I think, Chad should comment on that. We are, we are engaged with that committee.
Vanessa on your staff?
Okay.
She contacted us. I attended the P-bid meeting two months ago and I signed a document that she had.
Right. Glad to hear that. Thank you. And then also to remind you that some of the neighboring businesses are having trouble with tenants in your building climbing the fence and breaking into their business and that your property management was going to address those things.
Yeah, and we have interviewed the neighboring businesses and from our understanding, the Property Alliance, which is the fifth-largest property manager in the country and has a specialization in mixed-income projects, has responded and has effectively addressed their issues, but we will double-check on it, but we've actually...
Okay, I just, I just want them to stay in touch with the businesses in their circle there and, and make sure that everybody's...
What we, in reports that we got, what we understood was that what was interpreted, at least in the one significant case we're aware of, was there were people fleeing through the project that were dealing with, people trying to steal things?
Yeah.
Who went over the, who fled through the project and went over the fence and through the business area.
Oh, you think they were not your tenants, that there are people coming in from the front, the project going through the back?
Yeah.
But still, your security should be addressing that.
Our, our security is very focused on that and we have interviewed the joining businesses, so we're very, we're very focused on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. No other questions at this point in time, so. This is a Tefra hearing. I have no one sign up to speak on it, so is there any member of the audience, in addition to those who have spoken, that wish to address the board? All right, and seeing that, I'll bring you back to the board then, and I see Supervisor Kennedy's punched up and I know Supervisor Peters will want to offer some comments, so. Patrick?
A lot of the comments that were made during the questioning and so forth and particularly Supervisor Serna's comments, I'm, you know, right on with. You know, when we had our JPA meeting on January 30th, the date indelibly imprinted on all of our minds, I questioned then whether or not we should look at SHRA's fee structure and processes and, and is it discouraging entrepreneurial private investment into affordable housing? I think it is and I think that a lot of the comments that were made today, even by SHRA staff, maybe indicates that it is. I think we need to do more. We're in a crisis situation in Sacramento County for affordable housing. We need to do more to make it easier for the private investors to come into our community and build these types of projects, not make it harder. So, those are my comments.
Okay. All right. All right. No one else punch up? Ms. Peters?
Does anyone else have any comments?
Nobody else?
I've, I've said what I need to say.
I couldn't hear what you said.
I've said what I need to say.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Speak up, Mr. Serna.
I'm more unhappy about it than you are.
All right. So with that then, no other comments? Ms. Peters?
Okay. I'm, I'm going to move for approval of this project with a lot of buts. I, I just think it's been an unnecessarily difficult approval process. I think primarily because of using the state funding for this project. We've, when, once Mr. Klein personally got involved, we had a, a much better flow of information and agreement to the, to the needs stated by the Redevelopment Agency. And we talked about how we need to preserve our affordable housing stock. This area of Arden Arcade has a lot of old stock and we don't need or want to let it get run down and it's important to get this investment in this project. I do want to repeat, I'd like to have a discussion about the policy of allowing other agencies, other government agencies, having the ability to finance locally or maybe they need to be set up so that they adhere to our standards. I also would direct SHRA, when they send their, I guess it was a resolution that was mentioned, to the state, I also want a copy of the staff report sent, a copy of the memo from the developer and a CD of this hearing to all go with the REZO or whatever approval document it is that you send to them.
Okay. Yeah, and I would second your motion. I would just offer to you that when we bring the discussion back that, to I think the point Susan Peters, Supervisor Peters made, that I would want to take it, you know, take a hard look at that. If they do require us to pass on, that, that's the point that they have to. In order to have the ability to go forward, they got, the Tefra has to be conducted and sometimes it can be conducted in other communities and, you know, we've seen that or some come to us for, for bonds and so forth. And so, as a part of that full discussion though, I, I think that, you know...
It's frustrating to have to pass, have a Tefra hearing, pass it and not have the authority.
Right. Right. So, okay, that's the motion, it's been seconded by Chair. Is there any other comments or questions? All right. With that then, with no direction that was embodied in the motion, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all.
Look forward to your help in the P-bid.
All right. We've got a number of items yet to go this morning and we have some presentations and certainly want to give them adequate time, so. Oh, we gotta go back to item 46. We'll come back in a moment to item 46. Okay.
Item 48 is the presentation providing services to more seniors.
Okay, we have some presenters here from our Adult and Aging Commission and want to thank them for being with us this morning and I'll let them do some self-introductions. And again, we welcome them and look forward to your presentation. We've got one to present to you folks as well on behalf of the broader community on the Older Americans Act on the next, and then we actually have a presentation on the Elder Death Review Team. So it's kind of our older American, older Sacramento morning here, so. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Graulick. I am the interim chair of the Sacramento County Adult and Aging Commission. I would like to thank Supervisor Natoli for coming to our commission in February to discuss a variety of senior resource topics and for inviting us to come to present to you today. Our commission formed an ad hoc committee chaired by Commissioner Mary Schleter to look at a couple specific senior resource topics. As they began their investigation, they identified an overarching issue and we decided to change course and have them focus on that topic. Commissioner Schleter will present to you their findings and recommendation. I would like to stress that we view this presentation as a first step in an ongoing dialogue with all of you and with other county departments, advisory boards and organizations that are focused on dealing and addressing senior issues. So I'd like to say thank you and introduce Commissioner Mary Schleter.
Good. Thanks, Rebecca. Good. Okay. Mary?
Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm Mary Schleter and I'm going to guide you through this presentation that we put together for you. I'd like to start out with the Sacramento County demographics. The current population within Sacramento County stands at about 1.5 million residents. That's as, as of 2016. And of that population, approximately 285,000 residents are seniors or 60 years and older. That accounts for about 20% of our population, which means 1 in 5 residents in Sacramento County are of 60 years or older. Now, I'm sure everybody here has heard about the age wave, the grain of America, all of that, baby boomers, of course, some of us may fall in that category. But there are statistics that support the increase in the number of our seniors in our, in the coming decades. And they're estimating that between 2011 and 2030, the baby boomers are all going to have birthdays turning 65. In fact, 10,000, approximately 10,000 baby boomers will be turning 65 every day for 19 years. So that again reflects that the population currently is only going to increase in that age. age group. So our commission is always looking at the needs, aging needs of our community, and these are just a variety of topics and subjects that we have identified are very important to our community, and as Rebecca had mentioned, there was one of these topics in particular that just, you know, rose above all the others, and that's what I want to talk to you about The ad hoc committee got together and we had many meetings over the last few weeks just on this topic, and I'd like to start with a little story. One of our fellow commissioners has an acquaintance that lives in a senior apartment complex here in Sacramento, and she raised the concern that there is an outdoor stairway that goes from the first floor to the second floor that's missing the handrails. So she expressed the concern to one of our commissioners that she's very concerned about falling and injuring herself, or maybe one of the other residents possibly falling, and she's also in fear of retribution if she reports it to somebody, that there could be some issues for her down the line. So our, one of our commissioners stepped up and said, hey, let me find out where I can report that issue to. So she started out with the call line 211 in Sacramento, and 211 referred her to a county office, and when she spoke to the representative at the county office, that person said that that was not something that they could help them with, but possibly one of the federal, that sounded like a federal issue, so maybe you should talk to a federal office. So then the commissioner responded, well, would that be a local federal office, or would I go to Washington DC? And the response of the person on the phone said, gee, you know, I'm not really sure, but why don't you try 211? I'm sure they can guide you. So in a matter of like spending 10 or 15 minutes on the phone, one of our commissioners started at point A and went around to the different agencies and wound up right back where she started, and she still didn't have an answer, and the acquaintance is still in fear of falling because that issue hadn't been resolved at that point. And I'd like to add that my...
Is it not yet resolved, Mary?
That, I would have to get back to you with the commissioner and check with her on that.
Okay.
But I could follow up with you on that for sure.
Okay, we'll get, because you kind of left off, but we got back to 2-on-1, and if that's where it started, I can see, as you were saying, the circle, so...
Yes, yes.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks.
So just to add to this, my day job is, by day, I'm a geriatric care manager, so I work with a lot of adult children and seniors in the community, and one of my primary functions is to connect them with resources and support services throughout the area. And time and time again, when I meet with families and the seniors, and I lay down a plan, and I tell them about all the great resources that we have in our county, they are surprised and shocked because they had no idea that these resources were available. They're having difficulty kind of navigating the systems that are out there. So that brings me to this. So our ad hoc committee at that point said, gee, you know, let's, why don't we look and see what existing resources do exist in Sacramento County? Now, there are many, 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 like hundreds of agencies throughout the county. This is just a sampling, which includes governmental agencies as well as nonprofit, for-profit, as well as senior resource guides, which there are some really great ones that are circulated, published and circulated throughout the community, offered by various agencies. Now, some of the experiences that many of us have encountered are with some of the resource centers, are that many of them don't know what other agencies offer as far as resources and support systems. There's not really much of a connection there. They might know some, but there, it's really hard to keep track because there's just hundreds, if not thousands, within the community. And then there are some locations throughout the county. It could be a doctor's office, it could be a senior center, but where you can walk into a lobby and you see a display of brochures and different things that offer solutions or references or referral services for the senior community. However, many times that data or those brochures aren't regularly updated, so they could be outdated. There could be programs that have brochures there that are no longer funded and don't exist, or companies that have gone out of business, and sometimes even flyers from a senior fair or something that happened a few weeks ago that, you know, it's not happening anymore. And then there are other organizations that will charge a fee for a company or agency to display their materials, and then there are also some agencies out there that have an inclusive or exclusive policy for a company or agency to list their information or resources within the community. But overall, you know, we've got some fantastic resources definitely within Sacramento, Sacramento County. So the good news is, what I just stated here, lots of agencies, lots of resources and services, but the bad news is people, some people, many people, in my experience, have trouble finding them. They don't know where to go, they don't know where to start, they don't know who to call, they're not sure when they can get help, how quickly they can get help. So our committee came up with this idea, and I'm going to just kind of give you an example. So my dad no longer drives, lives at home, so he needs transportation assistance, and of course, there's children, you know, me and my siblings, but we all have our busy lives and our families, and we all work, so we can help him out once in a while, but not all the time. So he still needs transportation to doctor's appointments, you know, picking up groceries and errands and things like that. So if I had a question and I wanted to come to, you know, in Sacramento to find out what transportation options were available for my dad, where would I go? Well, the idea is to have a centralized database resource center where people could go throughout Sacramento County to locate the resources that are available throughout the county, and we're talking resources, whether they're government, so it could be state, county, nonprofit, for-profit, anybody and everybody, all-inclusive, but easily accessible via the computer, so a website, or they could call in and speak to a live person, or they could actually walk into a location and speak to someone one-on-one and access their information that they're looking for. So then they get their answer and they walk away a very happy person. They're not spending like 10 or 15 minutes on the phone, going in a complete circle and not getting any closer to their answer, as was experienced by one of our commissioners. And we're not really thinking of an idea to replace any existing agencies or services that are in the community, we're just looking at a centralized type place where people could go, one-stop-shop type of idea. The next step is we went and thought, wow, you know, why, this is a really good idea, and I'm sure we're not the first ones to think of it, and why reinvent the wheel? So we started searching to see who else out there might have something similar to what our idea was. So we looked at San Francisco, they had various means of offering resources out to their community and assimilating it out, South Salito also, but then we came across Marin County, and it was like, eureka, here it is, this is exactly what we envisioned, Marin So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the Marin County model. They offer exactly what we had envisioned, so there's three different ways that their community can access senior resources. They could pick up the phone and call, they could log on to their website from their computer, or they could walk in and actually speak to a live person. The way the telephone option works is it's manned by three social workers, and they are all trained in counseling and resources. They can provide information and assistance to their callers, and they can initiate county services. So an example of that would be if there was a senior living at home and they needed a little bit more help around the house, it could be with cooking or cleaning or running errands or all kinds of different things, but they couldn't quite afford bringing in a private paid caregiver from an agency, it's just too expensive, not within their budget. Well, they may qualify for some county services, and that social worker could actually process the application or screen them to see if they might be eligible for a county service such as in-home supportive services, services, excuse me. Now, another option is website access, and this is an actual snapshot of their real website. As you can see, they call it a community resource guide, but it's got the really large, easily identifiable icons. It's super easy to navigate their website. In addition, it provides all services in the county, so services not only offered by the county, but there could be services offered by the state, state programs, there could be nonprofit services, there could be for-profit services, and they're all-inclusive on this website. In addition, it's offered in multiple languages, and it's updated quarterly, so you wouldn't have to worry about receiving outdated or invalid information. And then there's the walk-in services, because, you know, some people do better on the phone, but some people want that face-to-face, they want one-on-one services. So they offer walk-in services during their normal business hours. They also offer public computers or access to computers in their lobby that contains this database with all the senior resources. There's always a trained social worker on hand to answer questions or to assist people with the computers and navigating through that, and people can walk in and speak to a social worker directly, or they can make an appointment ahead of time and have that So the recommendation of the Adult and Aging Commission is for Sacramento County to develop a community aging resource agency. So like we're going back to the one-stop-shop where people could just go one place and find out what's available within the county and not just county resources, and it would serve all socioeconomic levels. It would serve anyone that needs information and assistance. So anyone, that could be a caregiver, that could be a senior, it could be an adult child of a senior, it could also be a professional as myself, it could be a physician or a nurse in a medical setting that's looking for resources for one of their patients, and it could all be accessed via telephone, website, and in-person. The return on investment would be, again, it would serve all socioeconomic levels, it would streamline and enhance an access to the resources, so there wouldn't be the kind of, you know, calling one department or one agency to refer to another, to refer to another, to refer to another. It's one stop, they could go one place, get the information they need, and then move on. It would also help maintain and improve the standard of living for seniors in our community and support successful aging in place. Aging in place is where senior adults prefer to live at home through the end of their life rather than move to a senior community or another location, and aging in place studies have shown that in upwards of 90% of senior adults prefer to age in place rather than move and relocate. This would also prevent increased need for government services as far as the seniors Now, the great news in all of this, we did reach out, once we found the Marin County website and we loved what we saw, we reached out to them and had several telephone conversations with the people in charge over there, and they even offered to partnership with Sacramento County if Sacramento County chooses to move forward in this type, developing this type of system. And that partnership includes sharing their database, their infrastructure, their research and development, everything that they did along the way. It's kind of like going back to that why reinvent the wheel? If it's already been invented, you know, we could glean lots of information from them, save a lot of time and money. So here's a snapshot of Marin County's actual timeline and resources. Their project began back in 2014, excuse me. What happened was County of Marin sent out a survey to their, the residents of Marin County, just to kind of tap in and find out, get the pulse of the community to find out how user-friendly their systems were and easily accessible they were for the senior community, and it came back with negative results. The county was shocked and surprised that the systems that they thought were working all along were not working, and that in fact, the senior community was having a difficult time accessing information online via the telephone and also learning about other services that were available in the community. So at that point, they hired, the board of supervisors there actually hired a consultant and asked them to research it further. They did further studies and surveys which backed up the initial survey, that there was a problem, that the system was a bit broken over there, and the consultant brought in stakeholders in the community, so people that are currently working with the senior population. So they included government officials, they included, you know, geriatric care managers, people just from all the different, touching the different aspects, you know, the boots-on-the-ground kind of people. And then they came back and reported to the board of supervisors, and they said, yeah, we definitely have a problem, let's fix this. So then over the period of the next year, they funded money to continue the research and the development, and that's when they built the database. Their IT people in Marin County built the database and everything, and the stakeholders helped identify the needs and kind of figure out what needed to be involved and to make that successful. So fast forward to today, that program's been working over in Marin County for about a year now, and they have very positive feedback from the residents of their county, that it's, they're very happy with what they've come up with, and it's working. So the Adult and Aging Commission are suggesting next steps possibly is to form a steering committee of community stakeholders. They're currently working with the aging population, that they could reach out and contact Marin County and have discussions with them to learn more about their model. They could conduct surveys and studies within the county to identify the needs further, and then report the results back to the board of supervisors in six months or so. So in conclusion, you know, back where I started with this presentation is, you know, we've identified as a commission that there are many, many needs for the senior population within Sacramento County, but the overarching, the biggest one that really stands out amongst all the rest in our eyes is that there needs to be a centralized senior resource type of center. And that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mary, certainly on behalf of the commission, and before you leave, or maybe Rebecca's going to make some concluding comments, I'd like to, I know you have a number of commissioners that are here with you as well, and I think certainly the body of work that you bring us today is, you know, a compilation obviously of the efforts as you outlined, and we're certainly very pleased that folks are willing to serve in the capacity. I think this is a very good launching point for certainly some of the work that the commission's done over the years, but now as you've really, I think, focused in on, I know I had, as Rebecca said, the opportunity to visit with you folks a few months ago to, I think, bring some focus to a variety of issues, but certainly from the standpoint of the commission and the various disciplines and perspectives that you all bring, you know, bring a recommendation to us and kind of the next steps as outlined, and so I appreciate you're making the verbal and visual presentation, but all the work that the commissioners and some of your colleagues that are on here today have contributed to this, because obviously this is a, again, as I said, a compilation of work that you folks as commissioners have done over the, you know, past many, many, many months, so. Let me ask, any questions or comments of the presentation? And I think the question, I guess, may be turned into Nav and Paul, is kind of what next to, with our commission having done this work, kind of putting this, setting the table so to speak, and saying this is what we think is a very important priority, and, you know, to the what next?
I request Paul and our DHHS staff to sit down with the commission, look at the idea that they presented today, and if we were to implement, what would that look like?
Okay, because the piece that I saw there that Marin County at least did was that, and I wouldn't think that we put it all off on the commission, but there was some assessment done, and, you know, obviously they spent a, you know, pretty significant sum of money to do that, but maybe a way to, you know, shortcut that to at least, you know, get to some focus, so we, again, I think affirm what the commission brings us, and then, you know, talk about, you know, how we might be able to put pieces together to actually have something that works for, and with, you know, 10,000 people a day turning...
As the board knows, part of my work plan for the upcoming years was to focus on senior services, and I want to see how this piece fits in with the work that I would like to do in that area.
All right, very good. Okay, anything else, Mary?
I was just going to suggest that, you know, we'd be happy to assist in any manner that we can. we can and pass on the connections that we have over Marin County, if that would be helpful.
You know, it might be good, again, that I see both Paul Lake and our agency administrator and deputy county executive and Sherry Heller here and some of the other staff that work directly in the social service network, particularly those that's focused towards senior services. I think it might be good, again, to, having heard the report, and maybe to convene, once you've had a chance to analyze what's presented today, to, you know, not just attend a commission meeting, maybe get a, you've had a subcommittee working to bring our professional staff at the leadership level together with representatives of the commission, and, you know, be prepared to come back in maybe 90 days with, you know, a status report as to where we are on this, and, you know, what your take is on it, from your perspective, as you're focusing on senior services, and some of that may be reflected in budget discussions. And September is typically an opportunity, depending upon what things look like for us, to supplement activities, and this may be one of those that could fit that mold, so.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay. You okay with Paul going out and meeting with folks? Sherry, you okay? All right, very good.
Great, thank you very much.
Very good. Rebecca, you want to introduce your commissioners, since you're the chair? You had folks being here very patiently and quietly, but I know that they're very active, at least from my visits to the commission, that you had good participation, and appreciate your leadership as chair, so I'm gonna just take a quick moment here to introduce some, if you could.
I would certainly like to introduce our commission.
Sure.
So first of all, come on up. Sylvia Molina is our vice chair. So we are both interim, in this position as interim, are, the chair and vice chair both left in midterm in December, and so Sylvia and I stepped up to the plate.
Very good.
And then Mary Schlader, come on up, who you've met. Mary, as I said, she is also the committee chair of our outreach subcommittee, and then she shouldered this ad hoc committee, which truly was a matter of weeks they pulled all of this together. Casey Simon.
Hi, Casey.
Casey Simon is our chair of our recruitment and orientation subcommittee. She and Sylvia are really partnering hard to reach out to influential people in groups that, you know, maybe have a little bit more influence in the senior community, to bring more expertise and knowledge to our commission. Gordon Marshall, come on up. Gordon is our chair, Gordon's the chair of our oversight committee and is bringing expertise to that. So this is, the group here are the, I know.
Leslie.
No, I, oh, sorry, it's her too. So I'll introduce a couple more, but I first brought these people up because we five are the executive committee of the Adult and Aging. So then additional commissioners, who are no less important, Leslie, come on up. That's Leslie Julian now.
Hi, Leslie.
She's a very active commissioner and who is not only participates in the outreach community, committee, but she's also now volunteered to be on a second committee, and that's the recruitment and orientation. And Charlotte Dotson? Charlotte has spent many, many, many hours listening to this presentation and coaching and sharing as far, and in addition, she was on the ad hoc committee, as was Leslie. You were on the ad hoc committee.
And Gordon.
Oh, and Gordon too, sorry, Gordon. So they've all spent many extra, extra hours and some sleepless nights. So this is many of our commissioners.
That's great. Well, we appreciate the introduction, and I've got a presentation to get all stages from on Older Americans Month, but I know Supervisor Frost has something she wanted to weigh in before we do a presentation.
I just wanted to thank all of you for your work on the Adult and Aging Commission. As a person who is a caregiver, my husband and I care for my 95-year-old mom, and I can't tell you how many hours, and it's really not on me as much as my husband, how many hours he spends trying to identify resources, affordable resources. And it goes from a driver to adult daycare to senior companion, the list goes on, and it's, I hope in your work you will also think about resources for the caregivers, because it's sometimes a challenge. And I really appreciate what you're doing, I think it's really needed, and I want to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good words. Okay, we'll call it next item, so I'm gonna come down, and this is a good representative group to be present to.
Presentation of resolution proclaiming May 2017 as Older Americans Month in Sacramento County.
Yes, absolutely.
And I certainly invite our professional staff, they want to join our commission members down here too, and we have folks that work in adult and aging as well, but we have a, again, I think we're very privileged this morning and honored certainly to have our commissioners here with us, to have the presentation that you all put together and have worked on, and also then to recognize May as Older Americans Month in Sacramento County. And this has been a longstanding tradition in this community and county to recognize the contributions certainly of our older citizens, but also to, I think, recognize the work of those who volunteer and continue to in many different capacities, and I think you as commissioners certainly exemplify that. And this resolution recognizes, and I won't read all the whereas, but certainly the wisdom, the sacrifice, the hard work of all those who fit the classification of older Americans, and it sounds like the numbers continue to grow on a daily basis. But the purpose of this month is to certainly applaud the innumerable contributions and the ways in which older Sacramentans reach across the generations to help guide and mentor and nurture our children and young adults and adults of all ages, and certainly the work that you've done, certainly in the community, in your professional lives and continue to do, but also the contributions you make in our churches, our schools, and other settings in our neighborhoods that actually improve the quality of life in so many ways. And there are many activities that will be scheduled certainly throughout this month, one of them obviously your presentation here today. But our elders are shining beacons who, following a lifetime of work and effort, continue to work and contribute, and they deserve our deepest respect for all that they've done, but all that they offer to help enrich our lives, and certainly serves as excellent role models for people of all ages. So this board, in joining with a broader community, certainly recognizes you as commissioners, all those who, you certainly represent, in essence, the 285,000 older members of the Sacramento community who fit that category, and others who haven't reached that age but certainly work on behalf of, I'd like to Sylvia and to you as well, who I don't think have reached that magic age of 60 yet by any means, but certainly are making... Okay, so that magic age of 39 then, how's that? There we go, back to that now. But at any rate, we want to, again, express our appreciation and our heartfelt thanks to each of you and to the many, many tens of thousands of older Americans and older Sacramentans who make our community the richest and diverse place that it is. We can all acknowledge your generosity of spirit, your patience, your endurance and your strength, and offer our gratitude and respect for all those who, again, join in in proclaiming May 2017 as Older Americans Month in Sacramento County. And we honor all of you here today by your presence, and thank you for your work. And May 2017 is Older Americans Month in Sacramento County. So Rebecca, on behalf of the...
Wait, Gordon is our official recipient.
Oh, Gordon's the official recipient, okay, very good, so.
I want to say thank you on behalf of these people, and thank you for your cooperation. And I want to say, it's these people here who are giving me a zest for life on regaining my youth for these people.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, George.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all so much, and we'll look forward to keeping...
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, well, we thank all of you, and you're certainly invited to stay for the next item, which was a little more sobering aspect of getting older, and we actually gonna have a report from Paul Durenberg on behalf of the Elder Death Review Team, and I think it...
Mr. Chair, before you move on to that, I'd like to ask for a special reconsideration on item 46, which I just picked up a conflict on, so if we could, I'd move to reconsider 46.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reconsider item 46, please vote.
Unanimous vote?
Read the item into record one more time, so then we'll vote on it again.
No problem. authorize the director of airports to execute the scheduled airline operating agreement and terminal building lease between the County of Sacramento and the airlines operating at Sacramento International Airport and Mather Airport.
Okay, there we have it. Do we have a motion and to approve that item?
I'll move the item.
Okay, it's moved in second to approve the item as noted, please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Very good, okay, thank you for that. All right, then with that, we'll call item 50 then, Flo, please.
Item 50 is the Sacramento County Elder Death Review Team 2017 Report.
Paul, good morning, still?
Good morning, yes, it's still morning. I first wanted to thank all of supervisors for your continued support of the Elder Death Review Team in Sacramento County. I also wanted to, since I don't get to do this very often, publicly thank my, our E-Dirt team members. They put in a lot of extra hours and extra effort to come to the meetings and give information, and I kind of want to give a little shout-out to Dr. Heller and her team of wonderful professionals that are so dedicated and so intelligent about the issues that are going on in our community with our elders, that it's really inspiring to be, to be part of the team and be with them. I was gonna start out my presentation about statistics in the community, but following the Aging Commission, that seems redundant. You well know that there is a growing number of elders in our community. The unfortunate side of that is that it increases, and you've seen the spike in the number of calls for service, both to APS law enforcement and medical interventions that have happened because of these increases. And on the, another negative side is elders are also being targeted in our community, whether that's neglect issues involving their health care, or a criminal aspect of assaults and robberies, or financial scams. There are people out there that are targeting elders in our community. And part of our team, although we really do look at elder deaths, we do look at a wider range of issues, because the elder deaths that we review really do incorporate a lot of issues that are faced by elders in our community today. So as part of Penal Code Section 11174.9, we are supposed to review cases and recommend strategies for education, prevention, and if necessary, prosecution. You will notice that the report that you had in front of you, the case studies that we had include seven specific fact cases. I wanted to, supervisors, to know that's not the entirety of the cases we reviewed. We reviewed 20 cases over the last two years. But most of those cases that we reviewed, in our findings, they really were cases of natural causes that did not involve any recommendations that were needed or any further follow-up. So we decided to, in our presentation, to focus on the cases that involved recommendations or at least education to the public when they reviewed the report as to the kinds of issues that are going on in our community. You'll notice that if you look at the statistics that we put in the chart, that the age ranges go from ages 54 to 85. Both genders are represented in abuse victims and suspects. You'll notice that the female numbers were a little bit higher in this report than the male for victims of abuse. There's a wide range of ethnic backgrounds and also financial backgrounds. We did have one case where there was an IHSS worker that was providing care to one of the elders. And you also notice that our two elders, were the oldest elders in their 80s, both were suffering from dementia issues, which is very common when you have people that are getting into that age range. When we look at where potential abuse is coming from, you'll also see a wide range of potential abuse locations. It could be neglect from a family member who's taking care of an elder. It can be a paid worker that could give inadequate care. Sometimes paid care workers are through IHHS, IHSS, and those workers do receive training. But sometimes people will get an outside person, a private person, to become a care worker, and those people oftentimes have no education and no training in care. There's also in our victim on case number four, you can see that there were strangers that actually just befriended the elder with really an intent to do criminal activity that ended up in the elder's death in that, in that case. We did make some individual recommendations on each separate case that was represented, but really we wanted to focus on the major recommendations at the end of the report, because we thought that that was more, it really represented the bigger picture as to what we needed to focus on. And interestingly enough, our first major recommendation really is a supplement to the Aging Commission that just presented. You'll notice that in our first case, there was a delay in the reporting of injuries. And what was really concerning to our team was that we had an elder that was in a nursing facility that was licensed, and then that, the owner of that licensed facility persuaded that elder to come live at that person's home, which then does not have the same licensing safeguards. And there was a delay in the reporting of the injury in that case. Where we were, our recommendation is, and it's gonna be the same with a number of these recommendations, we're not sure that the board actually has the power to be able to enforce some of our recommendations that may require legislation at a state level. We'll leave that up to you as to what, what your power is as far as recommendations go. But in a case like this, where you have a delay of multiple days of a severe injury, an injury that a coroner found could have contributed to the death, if we had a requirement for anyone in a skilled nursing facility where there's an injury, that there'd be a two-hour reporter to APS, that would include any other location that even in a non-licensed facility, if someone owns both a non-licensed and a licensed facility, we may have been able to get to that patient, we may have been able to do some prevention and sustain that patient.
Paul, can I just ask you on that one? I mean, a couple of these are pretty troubling, and here you had someone who was only 54 years of age, is that correct? And I guess I'm, I'm curious, and maybe we don't know, or maybe it's still under investigation, but it was referred to community care licensing, so this has enough time in between. Do we know whether there was anything done? Because someone who, taken a fall of the magnitude that certainly resulted in a skull fracture and bleeding of the brain, that's pretty serious. I mean, obviously it resulted in death, or at least contributed to the death, and I guess what I want to know, is this person still licensed to, and whether that happened in the licensed facility, or they persuaded this person, for whatever reason, to live at their home, and then this occurs, and that person ends up dead at 54 years of age, and that to me has caused concern, and you know, I don't know what community care licensing has done in this one, but I guess I'm really curious to know. Do you, do we know?
The, when we presented the report to you, community care licensing was still doing it. When we presented the report to you, community care licensing was still doing their investigation. They had not completed their investigation, so there were no actual final results as to what they were going to do. And of course, in the meetings, they don't talk about, if an investigation is still pending, they don't talk about what they are proposing to do. But they do have the power to shut down--
Sure.
--a licensed facility.
And this incident occurred in 15, 2015? I didn't have the dates on some of the, I mean, it was just that your report was 15, 16, but do we know when that occurred?
I believe that one was 16.
It was 16.
Yes.
So it was last year.
Yes.
Would that be something you could certainly, again, I for one am interested to know what they would conclude. And I don't know how long their investigation takes, but obviously, the person, after seven days, died, so--
Yeah.
And that's concerning to me. Someone lost their life.
Absolutely. Yeah. I will make sure that once that actual--
Yeah.
--decision is made, that we'll report it back to--
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
Sure. And our second case is a case that really is representative often of what APS faces. APS does not have the power to go beyond an elder or an elder's family when they refuse APS's intervention. It's a frustration that APS also often faces. So our recommendation on Case Number Two, as far as reporting to law enforcement and reporting to APS, when there are concerns about follow-ups with health care, because many times, the first signs of neglect and abuse can be the basic health care kinds of things, or basic grooming is a sign. And that really kind of ties into our recommendations down below for that case. The case that got a lot of discussion, it was Case Number Three in regards to drug testing. We really put this into the report just to kind of explain how the system works right now and where gaps can happen. Just to kind of explain how a report can be made and how difficult it is sometimes for law enforcement to do follow-up. In this case, because the death happened, and there was a number of days before anyone suspected that there was any kind of abuse, by the time that happened, there was no way for law enforcement to go ask back and get a search warrant for any blood test that would be relevant to be able to show what that person's blood level was at or around the time of the death. And again, I, it's a case, when you look at it, I think immediately your eyes might point to an IHHS worker as a suspect. But in reality, that IHSS worker really has a limited number of hours per day that they spend with the patient. So, but what that does really, when you're a family member of a deceased, and you get information like this later, you're filled with stress and frustration, because the system isn't able to respond and give you the answers that you want, because it's, everything is too late. Now, I've had some extensive talks with Rick at IHSS, but he was very cooperative with our reporting, and it really helped us with our recommendations. They do a really fine job over there. And he talked about how this, actually creating a system where you required testing would be very, very difficult, very, very cost expensive. There is no other place in the state that does it. The rules of IHSS do not require that. In fact, IHSS does not actually do any supervision of the people that are getting paid under the program. It's really the elder themselves that actually determine who the IHSS worker that they pick to be their care worker is. And it can be a family member, or it can be a stranger. But I was really impressed with the training programs that were available through IHHS, not only for their workers, but for people that are not IHSS workers. And that goes, again, to our later recommendation. The Case Number Four, in regards to background checks, was really our recommendation. I think this is one of those educational tools. If we can get out in our community and explain to elders that it is an available option for you to do a background check on somebody that you may be considering as a care worker, that that could be very, very beneficial and stop some of this neglect, especially the kind of thing where strangers are befriending elders to try to gain their confidence to try to further criminality.
Paul, can I just ask you on that one? Again, that was probably one of the most disturbing of all the ones here. The criminal abuse referred prosecution, if you could just tell us where that's at. But again, the description here, the very brief ones, that, you know, a person was obviously, you know, they dragged him around the house, blunt force trauma injuries, they were, you know, the items stolen from, were being sold on Craigslist while his dead body was retained in the garage. I mean, it's a pretty gross description, but it's reality what it was. And so, I guess I'm curious as to, has there been a conviction on this?
Yes, we were able to attain a murder conviction in that case.
And what was the sentence?
I don't have the sentencing details off the top of my head, but I believe it was a first-degree murder conviction--
First-degree murder.
So we're looking at 25 to life.
Okay, I'm glad justice was served then.
Yeah.
Thanks.
On Cases Five and Six and Seven, those are the kind of cases that we repeatedly see, where you have family members that are overwhelmed with the caregiving responsibility, really don't have the educational background or the knowledge of how quickly pressure sores can become ulcers and can really contribute to sepsis and a real quick decline on elders. And oftentimes, you're faced with elders that know that they have children that may have some drug abuse issues, but don't want to disclose anything, because they don't want to be responsible for, you know, in their last years, to be responsible as the one who puts their son, daughter behind bars. And I think it's important to really get out to the community that there are a lot of options that don't involve law enforcement or prison in regards to drug recovery, that you can go to and you can communicate and you can get help, that really don't necessarily involve locking up your son or daughter. And really getting help for that son or daughter is good to be better off for the senior, is going to be better off in the long run for the adult. Moving to our major recommendations, our major recommendation really, I was really kind of summed up by the Aging Council, because we were talking, our team recognizes also that there are a lot of wonderful options out there for seniors, and a lot of seniors out there in our community have no idea, and don't know how to access them, and find the system that is there frustrating if they make an initial attempt that fails. And that's why our real main recommendation for this report is to hold informational meetings, seminars in each district of the community under, I'm hoping that each of the Supervisors would have a location that we might be able to use. I have been a contributor on a couple of these in years past, and I find that they're very well attended, especially if you have a little bit of free food. I noticed Supervisor Frost, you were talking about your 95-year-old, I think it was father?
Mother-in-law.
Okay, mother-in-law. I have a 92-year-old father that I, he's still living on his own, but over the last year, he had some real health declines, and we had to deal with the recovery process. So I understand a little bit more now than I ever did about what the process involves, and how frustrating it can be even for a caretaker who thinks that they are educated. And, you know, I've worked in the system, you know, and there's still frustrations. So I think if, every time we have an educational seminar like this, not only do we go out and we educate elders about what are the opportunities and available options in the community, but we also send the message that we care. I think that's just as important as the information that's going to be in the seminars, because I think there's a lot of elders out there that really wonder, does anybody really care about us, or about me personally? And so I think that message is going to be key. There's also, the second major recommendation that we talked about is talking about kind of integrating a little bit law enforcement's training when they're contacting elders. A lot of times, elders, as I said before, are a little bit reluctant to disclose, especially if the neglect or the abuse involves a family member, but they may be fearful. And one of the things that we found in our Family Justice Center, which has been, as you know, open still less than a year, is more than 10% of the 1,400 people that have come through our center, our elders are seeking restraining orders. And we've had a number of elders that have come down, gotten restraining orders, when they've talked to our, to our either therapist or social worker, disclosed that they do not feel safe to return home. And one of the wonderful things that we do have in our community is that elder safe house.
Safe house.
And we've been able to take elders straight from the Justice Center in our van, right to the safe house. So that kind of impact is, I think, really beneficial for our community. And I think if we can train law enforcement to not just get frustrated when you're faced with a non-cooperative elder, to give them an option of, you know, you can, we can take you down to the Family Justice Center, or they can come pick you up, and we can get you a restraining order, and that might make you safer. And then, at that point, when you're at the Family Justice Center, then you talk to an elder about what a safety plan is, and how you can make sure that you're safer by planning ahead. So all of these things, I think, are, can absolutely make a difference. The third recommendation is, again, talking about skilled nursing facilities. Most of the skilled nursing facilities are good and, you know, reliable, but there are a small percentage that are not. And reporting deaths to an ombudsman immediately afterwards alleviates the potential for a case to get through the cracks, because right now, there are some skilled nursing facilities that just have a doctor come in and sign off on a death certificate. No one reviews the case, no one reviews if there's any injuries, no one reviews, there's no autopsy done. So those cases are very, very difficult to be able to know, especially, you don't really have to worry about it in a skilled nursing facility that is quality and doing good work. But on the small percentage that aren't, those are the ones that you really want to be able to have that kind of response to.
Paul, you were suggesting, or at least the recommendation here suggests, that it might require either state legislation or county ordinance. It was things to me, if it's a county ordinance, that I for one like to see as considered that. Again, I, you know, I don't know how you necessarily notify those folks if they're, I guess, if they're registered in community care licensing or some other way that they register, that you would have at least some way to track, and then put them on notice that they'd be required to report that. And that, you know, it's not merely just, you said, a doctor's signing off, and that's the end of the matter. So I, you know, it seems to me that would be fairly simple for this county to address, to require that reporting, to assist our Elder Death Review Team in its work, and hopefully send a message, like you said a moment ago, we do care. It may be a very small measure, but it may help, you know, identify sometimes after the fact, which I mean, it may help that particular person, but may, you know, lead us to other potential problems, and, you know, keep, you know, good operators, you know, rewarded, but also if there's somebody who is, you know, out of bounds and not attending to people's needs, and comes to attention of, you know, the authorities via that, you know, that requirement, then I think that's important, so. Do other counties have this, have an ordinance that requires those to be--
Not to my knowledge, and I don't remember having any discussions about other counties with our team. So it's unknown to me.
Okay. I guess I just look to Robin, if you could take a look at that. And, you know, I think, again, it's a small measure, it doesn't change, you know, it doesn't change anything that's reported to us today, but it might help in the future. And to me, it seems like it may be one easier step that at least provides one more tool as you're doing your work ongoing, but certainly looking back as well. Thanks.
And then, the last recommendation is just continual training for emergency response and first responders and law enforcement. Every time you get, you know, a team trained, somebody moves, somebody transfers, new person comes on, so continual training is always, always important. And that really concludes my presentation today. Thank you for your patience and for caring. Do appreciate it. We did have some graphs. I don't know if they were helpful or not. We put a graph kind of showing where in the county are elder deaths that were--
Did you want to bring that up?
Suspicious.
It's loaded in. You can bring it up. I think it's your second slide.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay.
Supervisor Frost, I apologize for not updating the name. I feel terrible about that.
Oh, it's all right. I'm new.
Okay. Well, thank you, Paul. Again, thank you to you and your committee for its work, and I'll ask my colleagues for any questions or comments on the report.
You did mention that you would like to have some workshops.
Yes.
So if you contact my office, maybe--
Is your mic on?
Something like that. Sorry.
It isn't just me that can't hear you. No one can hear you.
I'm sorry. I would be interested in discussing a possible workshop for District Four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and I would as well. But I would also want to roll this in, I think, Nav, to you and Paul, and to Dr. Heller, to look at some of the things here that I think go back to what the Commission was talking about relative resources, and whether it's having a centralized location or the availability, training. And I think to look at, you're going to give, you know, I think, adult and senior services, seems to me that, not just for care providers, but also for, you know, other folks who may have friends and family, that, and awareness, but the opportunity, then, and even for seniors themselves, who are elders, who are in situations where they feel like it's helpless, it's hopeless, and I just, you know, and they just survive until they no longer survive. And I just, I think that, you know, part of that is caring, but also doing what we can as a broader community, and certainly with some of the resources we have available to us, and not only, I think those are most subjects to neglect and abuse, but also those who might be at some risk. And I would hope that in a civilized society, we could find a way for an aging population to live in dignity without, you know, these situations. These are the, truly the anomalies versus a growing population, then reflects a growing number of incidents like this. So I guess I would just say, I would expect that as part of this report, in the Adult and Aging Commission report, maybe you can come back to us and, you know, in between the, you know, June and September budget framework, and, you know, it may be involve some policy direction, it may involve some work, certainly workshops that we can do that might even assist, I think, in getting information out, but kind of, you know, taking the temperature out there, what is it that people, you know, beyond what the Commission has done, are seeing as being needs, either resource-wise, or information-wise, or assistance, who do they go to? Because these replace, obviously, reflects some of the more serious situations, but just the challenge that Supervisor Frost and others can reflect on you as well, Paul, trying to get those resources, even when you know how to navigate the system--
Yeah.
--can be challenging, so.
Supervisor Tony, I would absolutely, he is on my list to talk, once I get done with the budget. The review that I want to do on my work plan, I have a fairly, a little bit longer time period than getting it done in August. I wanted to kind of get it with Paul Lake and with all the different folks that spoke today. I want to get a better feel for what all the issues are. These folks live it, they've done all the Commission work, and then come back to you with what needs to be done with policy, if there's funding realignment, what are the kind of things we've got to do, kind of the approach we did with homeless, and have a roadmap, if you will, as populations aging, as every speaker has mentioned, and we're going to see more, more folks that are getting older. And if our budgets need to be realigned, I wasn't on an aggressive schedule to get it done in June or September. I want to spend some time and really think with them on how we need to realign our items. If they're short-term items, looking at Marin, absolutely will do that. But I'm viewing this as a little bit longer time period to work with them.
And I was happy to be able to pass out my cards to the Commission, so we can--
Oh, very good.
--coordinate and work a little together.
Well, thank you for your work over the years, too. I know you've, this has been a passion for you, and certainly, you're a good legal mind, but you also have a big heart, and I know you care deeply about certainly the people in this community, and appreciate, it's reflected, obviously, in your report this year, Paul, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. That's a receiving file. Then we'll anticipate getting a report back and continue to work with certainly folks that presented to us this morning, so, very good. Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. We do have a couple of off-agenda speakers that have been waiting patiently, and so we'll take those before we take the noon recess, the closed session. Okay, I have, the first one to speak was Kevin King. Kevin submitted some material, and then followed by James Saunders, so. Yeah, Ms. King, come on in. Yeah, Mr. King, come on, come up for, yeah, please. Yeah. Good afternoon, Mr. King, and we, we did get your materials, I know, I think you submitted to each member of the board, and the clerk did distribute that, so I'm going to allow five minutes to allow you to, because I know you have a lot of material, but I think the essence is, obviously, you have some, some requests you want to make to the county, so.
I'm going to start off with, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kevin E. King. I lost a son, Kevin Eugene King Jr., to a hit-and-run driver in 2007 on Metaview, on 24th and Metaview. This had a big impact and change in my life. I'm here this morning to speak and address, there's been some officer, sheriff, sheriff's misconduct. Yesterday was the, was Law Enforcement Memorial honoring those who lost their lives in the line of duty. Some law enforcement officers have really good, loving hearts. I understand some of those law enforcement officers who really, truthfully, and honorably swore to uphold the law and to serve and to protect. My mother, in fact, was a dispatcher for the California Highway Patrol for 27 years. They were state police first, and then California Highway Patrol. Well, the problem I'm having here, board members, is my mother's home is off of Tangerina, whose district is that? Off of, that's your district? Hi, Mr. Pack, Mr. Kennedy, what's going on here? There's a problem, an issue with the ownership. When my mom was passing away, she was worried about who was going to get the money, and my brother took that. I got another brother that owns the house in Rockland. So he took all the, you know, she was in law enforcement, so she had a nice savings. He took all the money that was supposed to be split between us, so therefore, I sought to go after the property after that, and I did an application for property transfer, and I had, and, and ownership, and I got the tax exclusion. Well, the Sheriff's Department has been out there, I've been dealing with them for six months because the house went vacant, for, it became vacant for a year and a half. And I would just drive by and see blankets hanging in the windows, and I won, and windows kicked out, and doors kicked in, and finally, one day, I went by there after, because I put the property, I had the property transfer in in 2014, but federal national mortgage foreclosed on the house. Don't never take reverse mortgage, because I'm working on that now, and I found out that they fleeced her. There's not a house over in the Parkway District worth $469,000. She paid, my mother paid, in 1994, my mother paid $105,000 for that home, and for 13 years, for 10 years, she paid $1,300 a month. I don't, that came up to $156,000 or something like that, and I'm like, where, who in the heck got that much of a profit on the home? So therefore, I found out that, I, I noticed that when I, I got all the paperwork on the house, historical owners and the loans that she took, and I noticed that she was fleeced and, and, and the scam. And I noticed that on some of the loans that she took, the partial number for the tax, for the, for taxes wasn't there. If you're getting a loan on your house, the partial number for taxes should be on some of those loan papers. I didn't see that. Moreover, I studied the reverse mortgage law, and I, I stayed stiff on that, and I found out the trustee's deed was fraudulent, because they can't meet the new, there's no way on the, the reverse mortgage, you have to, it has to be in tin-faced bull type. And you have to have counseling classes, you have to have 14 points in counseling classes. So therefore, I'm trying, the sheriffs arrived out there, and one guy threw me out in the, in the storm on the, on December 23rd, I was thrown out in the storm. I said, I, I had bills in my name, I had called, and he said, well, one of the sheriffs came out and said, just get a bill in your name. So I was trying to establish, I'm, I've got two cases pending in Sacramento Superior Court. And he wanted to know where I was on the cases, which is, he had no, that's beyond the scope of his duty, he didn't have, he don't need to know where I'm at, that's not his business. His job is to, to serve and protect, but they, he threw me out of there and let two Hispanic males come in to my house and take some of my property. And I didn't think that was appropriate, and somebody's got to pay for that. Now, I'm going, I'm going to challenge Scott Jones to look into this, I'm, I'm filing another complaint, because on the 4th, two more, I thought those guys were going to leave it alone, because I filed a citizen's complaint on, on the 4th, two female sher, sheriffs came out and were beating on the window. I've got somebody in the back room to watch it, in case somebody tries to get in, because somebody tried to break in on me. And when I, when that cop, when that sheriff threw me out, when I wrote the citizen's complaint, it looked like his boot print, somebody kicked the door in. And I think they, I think he was mad, it looked like the same military-style boot he was wearing, because I'm a military boy, my, my father was Air Force, my brother was military police, I was raised on base and born on base. But the thing I'm saying is, what I want, the, the two sheriff deputies that came out on the 4th of May were banging on the window, and I looked out, my friend said, hey, man, the sheriffs were out there. I looked out, out the window, and they said, open the door. And I'm going to do that, but I'm, I'm, I don't think, I'm not going to open the door no more until they come up with a warrant and some, some legal papers. So I opened the door, and they said, you're not supposed to be here. I said, you got any paperwork, you got, you have assigned unlawful detainer by a judge, you got anything to say, I ain't supposed to be here? She said, she said, no. I said, well, what you, what are you doing here? Like that, and both of them came over on their break, because they're mad that I wrote those other officers up for throwing me out in the rain. They were over there on their break. I called dispatch, and they said, we don't know who's, we don't know who they are out here. So I told them to get out, and one of them acted like they were going to reach for their gun. That's the reason why I'm here today. I've been putting up with this crap for six months. Now, I'm going to take it from here, but I want you, I don't want, I, listen, I don't like guns in the house, period. I told, they were in the garage, she bought her computer in the room.
Kevin, you kind of wind it up, I know there's a lot to it, and you wrote a lot down, so kind of bundles up.
She bought her computer, and upset, she bought her computer in to look up, to see if she can get me on something, and put it on my washing machine. I told, I, I'm fed up, I'm getting tired of it. I told, I told both of the female officers to get out, get, get out, I said, I'm going to shut the garage door, and if you, if you want to stay in there, you're going to be locked in, it's hot. And she said, you better not, and reached for the gun. But they, I called dispatch, and dispatch didn't even know they were out there. That's harassment. I'm here this morning because they're supposed to, I, I feel law enforcement officers, even the Sheriff's Department, should be out getting along with the community. I feel like that was being loose cannons. They called, six more officers came out to see what the heck was going on out there. So all I'm saying is, I wanted to let somebody know what exactly is going on, because they, dispatch didn't even know they were out. They took my friend to jail, he had a misdemeanor.
Yeah, I saw that in here, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, that wouldn't have, never happened if they wouldn't have been taking their break, coming over there to harass me. I can't, I couldn't believe it. Now, Scott Jones is going to hear about it, and I appreciate, I wanted to let the board know, because I wanted them to pay for the stuff that those two Hispanic males took.
File a claim on that.
And I filed a claim, Brett Carr, Carr said he was going to approve it, but it's not right, that somebody's got to pay for my property if, I'm kicking, this is, they had no right going where they at, okay?
Okay, so, Kevin, let's do this, because we've got another gentleman wants to speak off the table as well.
Okay, well, I just wanted you to get a piece of that, because I had to get that off of me, man. I had to get that off my chest.
Okay, and we'll make sure that, again, you submitted a pretty comprehensive packet here.
Oh, I'm doing, I'm doing another citizen's complaint on them, because that's not right to take my friend to jail. We bailed, I got him bailed out, you know? And that was, they were looking for code violations on me, to shut me down. You know, that's what they were out there for.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kevin, you bet.
And I appreciate you, all of your time.
Thank you, thank you for sticking with us this morning. Okay, thank you, okay. All right, then, Mr. Saunders, you come forward and I'll reset the clock here. Yep, and thank you for your patience as well, and just tell us your name and...
Greetings to the Board and to Chairman, Don Natoli. Thank you all as a whole. It's sad that African-Americans has to come over here about basically cop interference. I dealt with the Sheriff Department myself.
Raise that up there, make it a little easier.
Thank you. This is once again dealing with 2016, when I was, this was January 20th. That's not what I first came here to talk about, but this man inspired me more, because he's, he's recognizing what happens in your own community. What happened was, I called, first I let River Oaks Apartment be aware that I had a problem from a ex-military person who threatened to kill me. He also carjacked me. Two days later, he was upset, that was January 22nd, it was a catch-22, as we use in the play of words. I contacted dispatch. Now I have a recording of that, as far as the flash drive is concerned. I was the one who called, he home invaded me, I was on the phone with dispatch. The sheriff said he, the deputy said he did not get a dispatch report like that. They also made a false report and said that I was waiting outside. This was in a preliminary report at court. But those are some of the issues that we talked about in this in my complaint. I want to move on to the further, what's really bothering me today. I am homeless. I no longer stay there, but I was home invaded. River Oaks Apartment had a file against this person and many others who were racial and disrespectful. I was not being hostile. I have a health problems, I see the doctor, I just got out of the hospital emergency room for some ailments. I continue to see doctors, and it's about to be hot, me and the sun, as far as the heat and living out there, would be extreme exposure. This is setting me up for death. I am serious about having a place to stay, and I'm asking a question, more or less. Since I called the police, and it was recognized with their investigation that I did tell the truth, and I did give it to River Oaks Apartment, I was a victim of a crime, I was home invaded and assaulted. I would like to be supported as a victim of a crime, and also be able to go to the DA's area of crime, victim crime, and be supported. They have a voucher in which you were trying to help me with Paul Lake, and what it was talking about was trying to find a place. It takes 30 days, and you have to go out looking. I don't have that energy, and it's a lot of times I would have came here just to come and speak to you all. So I would like to have that opportunity to follow victim of crimes, so we can get the expedient of me finding a place to stay, and we can right a wrong. That is what I came here for. I appreciate your time and your energy, and I see that Susan Peters does have a cold, and Godspeeds, I wish she'd get well soon.
Thank you.
God is real good, because I'm wearing green, just like you, and I didn't know you were wearing green today. So, in one accord, thank you very much. This is James Saunders.
Thank you, James, appreciate it. I know the last time Paul was going to follow up, so could we get, have him take a look at that question that Mr. Saunders posed relative to whether there'd be some assistance as being a victim of a crime, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll follow up on that, James, so.
Thank you, sir.
Good, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, that's the speakers we have for the morning session, so we will, noting that one of the two o'clock items is going to be continued for two weeks, we started, we started at 2:15, I know you have a presentation, it's okay to start at 2:15, come back at 2:15, Patrick? Okay? All right, so why don't we come back at, at 2:15? Yeah, we have, and we have a closed session.
Yes, we do.
So, all right, so we'll adjourn until 2:15, regular session, go to closed session.
County Board of Supervisors, and thank those who were with us for the first part of today's session, and also those who've joined us, obviously, for this afternoon's session and the presentation that we have in a moment, and some other items for the Board's consideration. So with that, I'll turn to Paula to call the role, establish a quorum, and then we'll go right into the agenda.
Yes. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Very good. Okay, we do have an item that we're going to be continuing, so take that item up first, and we'll come back to the presentation immediately thereafter, and so, the item to be continued is item 51, I mean, excuse me, 52, excuse me?
52.
Yeah.
Item number 52, I need a motion to continue to May 24th at 2:30 PM. It's the appeal of the Planning Commission revocation, Howe Operations Use Permit and Variance Public Hearing to Appeal the Revocation of a Use Permit and Variance for Howe Avenue, located at 5260 Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community.
Okay, and we have given, we had a late request, Mr. Howe indicated that he was in the hospital, unable to attend today, so we actually remember very clear through the clerk's office that we intend to have this hearings per Board direction on the date that we're going to continue this to, which will be two weeks from tomorrow, the 24th. And so that's, either he or his representative can, can be here, otherwise, whether, irrespective, we're going to be taking action that day, so let's contemplate it, I just wanted to.
Okay, I, I need to hear the date again?
May 24th.
Okay, and it doesn't matter that his counsel has resigned, that he still has to make the improvements?
It doesn't, it does matter, that's why, I give him the benefit of the doubt to be here for the hearing, but it, he doesn't have representation, and very frankly, you know, the message that was conveyed is that he needs to be prepared for the Board to act, whether he's here or not, representative or not, so that's the, that's the intent. I intend for the Board to take action.
Thank you.
Okay. And I don't know, do we have anybody to sign up to speak on the item? Okay, and so I think it needs to be clearly, that, I've been checking with the clerk, that was clearly conveyed to Mr. Howe, that, I understand that that was, so, okay. Very good. All right, so the motion would be to continue this hearing matter on revocation to Wednesday, May 24th at 2:30 PM in the afternoon, and please notice one more time the appellate on this, so that, be very clear, no misunderstanding that we're going to take, we're contemplating taking action that day. Thanks. That's the motion?
Second.
Move to second, and please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, then we'll come back to item 51, in which we have a good audience for, so if you call the item, and I know that Supervisor Kennedy is going to be doing the presentation on behalf of the Board, so.
Item 51 is a presentation of resolution recognizing the 135th anniversary of the Chinese Exclusion Act and the immigrant and refugee rights of today in Sacramento.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right, Mr. Kennedy, you're up.
That handway was a call to the, call of the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's with great privilege and pride that I am here today to introduce a resolution recognizing the 135th anniversary of the Chinese Exclusion Act and the immigrant and refugee rights of today in Sacramento County. I'm going to read a few wherestes, and then I'll let somebody speak, if you'd like to speak to the Board as well. Whereas on May 6, 1882, President Chester Arthur signed the Chinese Exclusion Act, which was the nation's first law to prohibit immigration solely on the basis of ethnicity. Whereas the Chinese Exclusion Act was renewed in 1892, 1902, and made permanent in 1904, prevented Chinese laborers from entering the United States, and denied Chinese a pathway to citizenship for more than 60 years. Whereas the United States Senate in 2011 and the United States House of Representatives in 2012 unanimously condemned the Chinese exclusion laws and affirmed Congress's commitment to preserve the civil rights and constitutional protections of all people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County Sacramento, State of California, does hereby mark May 6, 2017, as a day of inclusion in recognition of the harm caused by racially discriminatory immigration measures, and to honor the contributions of all immigrants and refugees who have enriched our communities. This, signed this day, May 9, 2017. I think that, you know, marking what is really a very, very dark day in our history, but at the end there, it got better with the repeal. But, you know, it's important that we remember, as they say, if we do not study history, we will be condemned to repeat it. And I think that in this day and age of great uncertainty, and as we know, we have many refugees and immigrants coming to our county already, still, and I'm proud to say, and they're being very welcomed. So with that, who would like to speak?
Thank you very much, Supervisor Kennedy. My name is Greg Jung, and I'm president of an organization called OCA. OCA is a national membership organization founded in 1973. It is a membership of, where our charge is to provide the well-being for APIs around the country. country for social, political, and economic causes. Our chapter here, and these are some of our board members, we're celebrating our 22nd anniversary. We were here, founded in Sacramento in 1922, and we're very proud and we're very honored to be with you today. Our organization, our board members, we've worked very hard to support our community here in Sacramento. And the opportunity to be with you this afternoon, to recognize this anniversary, again, we're very honored and we're thankful for you. And with that, again, with this resolution, nationwide, our organization has asked city municipalities and state to recognize this and we hope this does not occur again. So thank you very much for your time this afternoon.
Great. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, yes, sure. They would like a picture. Well, get all the board members back there.
Susan, I said, how about if we all come?
Oh. I have a cold. My ears are blocked. Can't hear.
Oh, no, it's good. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay, again, once again, thanks to all our guests here today and appreciate their efforts in our community as well. Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. All right, with that, then we can move to the next timed item, which is our item 53. Paul?
Item 53, public hearings on the benefit category changes and levies of increased service changes for the Garford Greens and Gentry Place subdivisions within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Okay, Mr. Davidson. Get the chief in charge today. Very good.
Bob Davidson with the County Engineering Division. And like was just said, this is, these are two public hearings to be held concurrently for the benefit category changes for the lev, and the levies of increased assessment, and I mean, service charges within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1 for two subdivisions, the Garford Green subdivisions and the Gentry Place subdivisions. As you know, CSA 1 does fund street and safety light maintenance in operation throughout the unincorporated area. These two rate change processes will change the rates from the current rates to the proposed rates. So with the Garford Green subdivision, there are actually two existing lots, which will become 77 lots with the subdivision map. And they will be going from one lot, which is currently safety light only category, and one lot, which is property and safety light residential categories, to 77 lots, which will be at the enhanced street and safety light residential category, which will have a rate of $44.77 per parcel. For the Gentry Place subdivision, it's currently one property at the safety light only rate. With today's action, it will be going through a protest ballot process to change the category to the enhanced, the enhanced street and safety light residential category, which is again at the $44.77 per parcel rate. So with that, I'm recommending that your board direct the clerk to open the ballots and tabulate the ballots for each of these two proceedings. And after that, after the ballots are tabulated, the clerk will read a statement regarding the outcome of the ballot process, which then if there's no majority protest, then the board may adopt each of today's resolutions with the information provided by the clerk's tabulation.
All right. So we do have the public hearings open and you want to proceed then?
So with that, I would suggest the clerk open up, you could go in any order you want. So just, I would read who it's from and what the ballot, what the information says on the inside.
We're doing Garford Greens and Gentry?
Oh, right. There's a Garford Green subdivision and a Gentry Place subdivision.
Okay, so then just put that out, which one you're opening and what the vote count is.
This is Garford Greens.
Okay.
Okay, legal owner, J.A. Fowler Family Foundation, parcel numbers 1220120045 and 1210120051. Site address, 8070 Vineyard Road, Sacramento, 95829. Annual service charge, $44.77 per residential parcel. And yes.
It's 100% of votes, yes.
So that would be one ballot cast and their vote was yes, if I could understand that correctly?
Right. That was for Garford Greens. So now we do Gentry Place?
Okay, Gentry Place. Legal owner, Sandra Weber, Eric Weber, parcel number 2130190032. Site address, 9281 Central Avenue, Orangeville, 95662. Annual service charge is $44.77 per residential parcel. And the vote is yes.
Okay. So there's the tabulation. Thank you to the clerk for doing that. So Bob, what's the next step? You need us to affirm that then?
Okay, with that, I suggest that your board take these one resolution at a time. So for the resolution related to Garford Greens, I would, I'm recommending that your board adopt today's resolution. But I would point out that based on the clerk's tabulation that in Section 2, there's a couple blanks in the resolution, and that would, in Section 2, it would read that the board had received zero written protest.
Okay.
And Section 3 would be reading as follows, "At the close of the tabulation, the board has received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of service charge rate category and 0% was in opposition." And with that change, I would recommend that your board adopt that resolution.
Okay. Entertained the motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second then to approve the resolution as noted. Nothing further then, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
That's for Garford Greens. Okay, next.
Okay, now for the Gentry Place resolution, I'll read Section 2 again. I mean, the Section 2 for Gentry Place, that is. At the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protest. And then Section 3 would read as follows, "At the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of service charge rate category and 0% was in opposition." And with that change, I would recommend that your board adopt the Gentry Place resolution.
Okay. Motion be in order? Move in second then to approve the resolution as noted for the Gentry Place subdivision. And if nothing further by board members, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, there you go. Thank you very much, Bob, for walking us through that. And concludes that item. All right, next item, please.
Item 54, approve the 2017 Neighborhood Traffic Management Project, Program Projects.
Okay. Mr. Mogisi, I see him coming down.
Good afternoon. Breza Mogisi, Department of Transportation.
And I would just note while you're getting ready, for those in the audience, who have some folks already signed up, but if you're here to speak to any of the items on the Neighborhood Traffic Program, Phil, our speaker, will call upon you when we're done with the presentations on this. So, thanks.
The item before you relates to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. We're here to ask for your approval of traffic plans for two projects. The two projects that are before you are part of a group of 40 projects that your board approved funding for back in August of 2016. For clarification, a Neighborhood Traffic Management project is a single residential street which has been petitioned by its residents for speed bumps or speed tables. So Neighborhood Traffic Management projects propose to install speed bumps or speed tables on residential streets to address speeding. The 40 projects are throughout the county and they are all in five supervisory districts. Although we're presenting traffic plans for two projects today, staff has developed traffic plans for all 40 projects and has worked with neighborhood residents to support, to build support for all those traffic plans. As shown here, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program process consists of four steps. Step one begins with residents submitting a petition requesting traffic calming devices, in this case, speed bumps and speed tables on their streets. Once a petition is received, staff collects traffic data, analyzes the data, and ranks and prioritizes the projects for funding. Once a year, staff brings a list of candidate projects to the board for funding approval. In the case of 2017 NTMP projects, the funding occurred in August of 2016. Once the funding is approved, we focused on planning or developing plans of, traffic plans for all the projects and work with neighborhood residents to build consensus for those plans. As part of this step, we ask residents to vote by ballot card to express their support or opposition for the proposed plans. As a minimum, we require a 50% response rate and 65% support rate for a project to be recommended for approval. The last step is board approval of the traffic plans. That's why, that's the reason we are here for the two projects. Based on the board-approved criteria, projects that have a support rate less than 65% are not qualified for further consideration. Basically, the lack of support is, disqualifies the project for further consideration. And projects with a support rate between 66 and 74% require a board hearing for the traffic plan. And we have two projects which fall within this category and that's, they are going to be presented to you shortly. And finally, projects with a support rate of 75% or greater may be constructed without further board action unless a petition for a board hearing has been filed with the Department of Transportation. We have one project that falls within this category. Based on the survey results, 37 projects have greater than 70% support rate. So 36 of those projects have been fast-tracked and have made it to construction phase already. One of the 37 projects is before you because we received a request for a board hearing and that project requires your approval. And one project has a support rate between 65 and 74%. And again, we have one project that meets that criteria. And two projects didn't meet the requirements, therefore they have been dropped from further consideration. So the two projects that we're asking your approval for are Linda Rio Drive and Rio Verde Way. As you can see, the Linda Rio Drive has 81% support rate. But again, due to a petition received by a resident to, for the board to hear that, you are going to consider and approve that project. And the second project has a support rate that would require your approval. We are asking your approval of the two traffic plans and with your approval of those two plans, we intend to begin construction and complete all 40 or 38 projects within the next four or five months. The estimated cost for all those 38 projects is about $500,000. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Breza. Let me ask members of the board any questions about the list or any of the projects listed on that list? Okay. If not, then we do have some speakers on at least one of the locations that we're having the hearing on today. And so I'm going to, oh, Sue Frost, Supervisor Frost, excuse me?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to, I do have a request for next year.
Okay.
But I can ask it after the public speaker.
Okay. We'll come back to that then, so, so, no. All right, so we have four speakers signed up to, I think, believe, to speak to the Linda Rio Drive neighborhood area. And I'll take you, they were given to me, Jonathan Warren, followed by Sandra Mallett, followed by William Mallett, and Emily Burgos. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Warren. I live on Linda Rio Drive, 9119 Linda Rio.
Sorry, could you speak up, please?
All right, John.
I dotted some of my thoughts down on paper here.
Okay.
Simply because I might get tongue-tied.
Okay.
Got a copy for you if you want them.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Now, I don't know if you could bring up the...
Which road are you speaking of?
I apologize. I'm speaking about Linda Rio.
Linda Rio. Okay, great.
You can probably get a map up. Do you want to get a map up there? Hang on just a second. Staff report?
The one where it says the project numbers on there.
I went to project list, this one?
Yeah, it had like number 24, number 20.
Okay, yeah.
What's right here?
Oh, he went to PowerPoint. He wanted one with all the project lists, I guess. Paula, can you call that back up?
No, I'm talking about this, the graphic on here.
Yeah, we're going to do. Yeah, we have your ways of doing it. Okay.
No, it's...
No, you want, you want the one with all the projects on it?
No, not the...
The PowerPoint.
The power, right, the PowerPoint that you presented where it showed the project number and the location?
Two of the projects. So it's in the PowerPoint.
Right there, yes. Thank you. You'll notice on your screen, it says Linda Rio Drive from Whitewater Way to the east end.
I'm sorry, you'll have to speak louder.
Sorry. You'll notice on your PowerPoint up there, it says, "Project number 24, Linda Rio Drive from Whitewater Way to the east end of Linda Rio Drive." And I really have no problem with that at all. The problem I have is if you take a look at the map, they expanded the area to include west of Whitewater Way as well. We live on Linda Rio between Whitewater Way and La Riviera Drive. And their traffic study was for Whitewater, was for from Whitewater Way to the east end of the street. end of the street, did not include our area. We understand that there are some concerns on Linda Rio, that's why I'm not arguing against the whole thing. Over on Larchmont Riviera Park, they have a lot of soccer games, soccer practices, where you have limited visibility, a lot of kids are crossing the street right there, the road narrows because all the cars parked on either side. That seems to be a pretty big concern. Over on Crawford's Barn, you have a lot of special events, you have the same situation there, and I'm not really debating whether you should have a speed table there or not. I'm just saying that on our block of the street, it's a completely different situation, and it wasn't supposed to be included in the scope of the NTMP. Besides that, we have good visibility on that street, we're sandwiched between two stop signs already, we have seven or eight houses in between stop signs, so people there don't get up too fast anyway. The majority of the traffic we're having there is in the morning and the afternoon where parents are picking up their kids at school over at the Earl of Wine, and, but they usually go around the speed limit, and we don't have a lot of speeding then. Another thing is, if, it's not absolutely necessary, we don't really want that on our section of the street because we have all the extra signage, pavement striping, guest parking in front of our houses is going to be eliminated, and we don't want the increased noise and pollution from the braking, accelerating when people go over the, over the table, and we think it's going to affect our property values. And we knew we were purchasing a home on a busy street, and this isn't, not some cul-de-sac, okay? We knew that there was gonna be some traffic there. Regardless of this, we don't allow our kids to play on the street because that's just the nature of the street, just like you wouldn't want a kid to play on whatever you, okay? You got a certain amount of traffic, you don't let your kid play there. So the installation of this speed table is not gonna change much for us, is not going to help us, is what I'm saying. Besides that, well, we got, you know, the usual things. The noise, the pollution from cars taking off and slowing down right there, it's gonna slow emergency responder vehicles, we do have a lot of old people in our, maybe I should just say elderly people, on our street, and not very many kids. In fact, the people on this, our block who have children, everybody we've talked to, and there's only a couple of us, are opposed to putting the speed table there.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you said you're on Linda Rio between Whitewater and what?
And La Riviera.
Okay.
Which was supposed to be...
And what's your primary reason for not wanting it? We've, we've already covered the pollution and the noise and that kind of thing. So what's the main reason?
Besides the, the property values is a good reason. It's a completely different situation than what's going on over at the parks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm not against the entire thing, I don't think we have to take 100% of this NTMP and, or nothing, I'm just asking that we strike that one speed, that's one speed table that's over by Raw Hide Way, which was not supposed to be in the traffic study to begin with.
Okay. So, thank you, Jonathan. So again, you're, you're opposition to the speed table, there, the first one on Linda Rio Drive, and, okay, thanks. Okay. Next, we have Sandra and William?
Is that everything on Linda Rio?
No, the next three speakers are...
Okay. Three more on Linda Rio.
Good afternoon, and thank you, board members. Okay, nervous. I live on Linda Rio Drive, and I want you to please trust your traffic study people, trust your engineers, the people who went to school. We live in times where we're worried about, we're worried about safety, and people are driving distractedly. We all know that in 2017, there's been a 14% increase in fatalities as far as people driving. How many times have you reached for the phone that isn't really ringing in your car, but it's ringing in your car? When our, when our neighborhood was established, people had, there weren't the distracted drivers. I think you should go with the traffic study. I live directly across from the park, the, the usage in our park has changed. Our neighborhood is changing. We have new children coming in, new families coming in, so, yes, I'm one of the old people who live in the neighborhood, but I'm seeing new people as well, with kids in strollers. So I, please, look at safety, look at distracted drivers, we all have screens in our car, the usages our park has changed. It used to be a community, a community, a month and a half, you know, a pickup park. Now we are, we're a competitive league park, and we work very closely with them. And as recently as November 30th, between La Riviera and Clearwater, there, our beloved postal worker was hit by a distracted driver, and her mail jeep ended up in the, in the middle of the road. On December 15th, 2016, at 9116, there was a car totaled because of excessive speed and not paying attention. People are distracted when they drive, you know this, you have paid people who know what they're doing to, to help us remain as safe as we can here in Sacramento County. I'm asking you to please approve the plan, and as it is sitting, it did receive 81% support rate from our, from our neighbors, so that is the only reason I'm speaking in that. Thank you, first of all, we've been looking forward to this for years, and, and just, we, please approve it, and thanks.
Thanks, Sandra. Okay, Sandra is followed by William Mallett, and then Emily Burgos, and those are the next, last two speakers. Anyone else want to address this, now's time to get a request in, please? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you, board. I'm speaking in favor, obviously, of approval of the final traffic plan for Linda Rio Drive. Like I said, I'd like to trust the professionals, we've spent a lot of high-end dollars on this study already, and I think they've done a great job. I'd like to, I'd like to see it approved. It does get a lot of usage, people do drive too fast, and as you just heard there, in November and December, this past, November, December, there was two very serious accidents caused by distracted drivers, and you can, it's hard to see on this little map, but there's some little curves and things right here, and people get going too fast, they look at their phone, next thing you know, they ran into somebody because it was just out of sight around the curve. So again, thank you for your consideration, I'd like to see these in. We've had five accidents right across the street from our house, right adjacent to Larchmont Park in your map, and we'll be getting a speed table right in front of our house, and I think it's great. They recently put one in last year on Vancouver Drive, or a setup in, and I've gone down there to observe how it works, and people slow down, they learn what's going on, it's usually part of their route, and I don't hear a lot of braking, I don't hear a lot of acceleration, they slow down, they go over it, and it just slows everybody down. So I think it's a good plan. Thank you, I heartily approve.
Thank you.
Thank you, one. Okay, Emily.
Hi, thank you.
Hi.
I guess I'm here to represent the younger folks on the street who would like to make families that don't get squashed. I live on Linda Rio between La Riviera and, I believe, Whitewater, yeah, I'm sure, sorry. So I live, and my neighbor Kelly live, right before the stop sign. So we would really love this speed plan, just because it would set the precedent for how quickly people should drive on our street. I know when people leave La Riviera and head down Linda Rio, you know, they're still accelerating, they're not going very fast, but by the time they get to my house and Kelly's house, they're speeding right through that stop sign. And as others have mentioned, there's curves, this street leads to a park, it leads to an elementary school, and this speed table will really help set the precedent for how quickly people should drive. You can put it in front of my house if you want to, just because we really want people to stop at that stop sign. But just to reinforce some of what others have said, you know, we love this neighborhood, we wanna build our families in this neighborhood, this speed table just helps make it more safe for us. I've lived here for six years and was relieved and overjoyed, and we opened a bottle of wine when we got our survey about the traffic plan. So thank you, and I am so grateful for this opportunity. I work for the government, and I always get to do what these folks do, but I was psyched at the opportunity to actually come as a member of the public and respectfully request that you approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you for your public service. Okay. That's all the speakers that signed up. Anyone else wish to address either one of these items or any other related traffic matter? Okay.
Before we go on to the next street, I'd like to...
Sure.
...ask DOT a couple of questions. First gentleman that spoke that was against this had a couple of comments that are things that I think DOT has already investigated in other...
Sure.
...things like slowing responder vehicles. I do believe Metro Fire has signed off on speed bumps?
Yes, we have coordinated with them, and they're fully aware of our plan.
And then, there's a question about the, speed bumps are between stop signs with only seven or eight houses in between, could you comment on that, please?
Basically, because there are already always stops along this stretch of roadway or street, we have tried to place the proposed speed tables in between the speed stop signs so as to improve the level of effectiveness for lowering the speed on that street. Now, I also wanted to comment on the question that was posed by the gentleman about the limits of the project. We can have the overhead display, please? Yeah?
Metro Cable could enlarge that, that'd be helpful. There we go. Thanks.
Yes, good.
I don't know about that.
What do you wish for? There goes the affinity.
Back it down some?
Have to reset.
Metro Cable?
Yeah, they'll reset it.
Move it over, Breza.
Back it down, please?
There you go.
Well, I don't know.
They're, they're doing, they're doing, just takes a minute to adjust the camera.
Just move the exhibit over a little bit. Highlight this part, right?
Okay. Actually, wanted to.
Good.
There we go.
Yes.
Very good.
Basically, the limits of the project are east end, which is all the way to the east, goes to the west, and all the way to La Riviera Drive. Our PowerPoint presentation had a typo in that it showed the limits to be Whitewater Way, which is incorrect. When you look at the map in your package, also correctly depicts the limits of the project as being La Riviera and East End. So we intended to cover the entire length of the street, which is east end to La Riviera, and the entire residents of this section were surveyed, and the plans were sent to them. And in fact, one of the proposed speed tables seems to be with, between Whitewater Way and La Riviera. Within this section, there's only two no votes, everybody else is in favor of the speed table that we are proposing here, which is between Waterway, Whitewater Way, and La Riviera. So this is just a clarification that the scope of the project was all the way, the entire street.
Okay, that answers one of my questions that I hadn't asked yet, but that's fine. So I guess it would be the theory behind having seven or eight houses between a stop sign and a speed bump. Is that usual, does that have any downside to it that you know of?
The best, the, the most preferred way is for the, for the speed table to be in between the stop signs, and that's what we have tried to do. Obviously, there are some constraints, driveways, or that would, you know, dictate to some extent as to where we can place the, the speed table, but in general, that's what we strive for.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We didn't have any, no one here on the other street signed up, so that was all we had, and I think Supervisor Frost had a question, too, so.
I had a question.
Oh, sure. John, I'd let you come up very quickly, we don't, we don't get into back and forth, but if there's something else you want to clarify, I think...
Sure. I think it's a little disingenuous to say that the scope was always supposed to be La Riviera to the east end, when I have a traffic study form right here from March 2016 that clearly says Whitewater to the east end.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for pointing that out.
But they got votes from everybody. So I'm sorry we can't make everyone happy in this process, but I'm going to move approval of this staff item as is.
Okay. All right. And that, okay, so we have a motion?
That was my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All right, before we vote, did you want to make a comment, Supervisor Frost?
Yes, I did want to ask DOT if you would consider for next year, a road that is in my district, District Four, and it's Scott Road. I receive a lot of complaints about Scott Road, flooding during the wintertime, sharp turns, people that speed, and there's hills and valleys where people that aren't speeding are feeling nervous that someone's gonna fly over. It's just, there, I know my staff are working with you, but I just wanted, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but I thought for next year, if you could consider looking at ways that we can mitigate some of the fears that people have about Scott Road, maybe the flooding, I know there were some ideas on how we could work on some cost-effective, cost-effective ways to work with that rather than have to build bridges. Anyway, I wanted to put in my request for next year. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else on any traffic matters? If not, then we have a motion second to approve the staff recommendation. We would thank you to all of our speakers who've been here today representing their concerns and thoughts about the proposal. All right, if nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. Thank you all for being here. Next item is set for 3:00, so we got about one minute, I guess we can go to our nominations.
3:00.
Oh, 3:00, okay. Good. So call the next item in, please.
Item number 55, you're introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 6.90, Title VI, to the Sacramento County Code relating to resale and possession of butane. You're waiving full reading, and you're continuing to May 23rd for adoption. The document is not applicable.
What's not applicable?
Yeah.
I think what that means is the environmental document, we did not prepare one, given that it's not a project.
All right. All right, Mr. Puhli.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Natoli, board members, Chris Puhuli with Planning and Environmental Review. It's my pleasure to present this item, which introduces an ordinance amending the county code related to the resale and possession of butane. I have just a few formal remarks, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation to assist with this presentation. At the board's April 25th hearing, Supervisor Serna requested staff research and draft an ordinance related to butane sales and possession, given the negative effects in unincorporated county neighborhoods due to illegal cannabis honey oil explosions. The main culprit in those explosions is the use of butane to extract THC from marijuana plant material in order to make honey oil or concentrated cannabis. The butane is highly flammable and odorless, which leads to the unprecedented danger for people in proximity to the operation, as well as first responders and law enforcement. Staff has drafted a proposed ordinance that is intended to limit the amount of butane that can be purchased at stores in the unincorporated county. The draft ordinance is modeled after similar ordinances adopted by other cities and counties in Northern California. Highlights of the proposed ordinance include that it limits the resale of butane to more than, to no more than 600 milliliters in a single transaction. For point of reference, butane is commonly sold in eight-ounce containers or 236 milliliters For point of reference, butane is commonly sold in eight-ounce containers or 236 milliliters. So, we're looking at roughly two canisters of butane in a common-size format. The ordinance also requires that no more than 600 milliliters can be purchased per month per individual and makes it illegal to possess more than 600 milliliters at any one time. And the ordinance requires retailers to prepare a bill of sale with required information and check customers' identification at the time that they purchase the butane canisters. I should note that butane that contains an odorant is not included in the ordinance's definition of butane. That is because butane that is refined is odorless and preferred for THC extraction as to not contaminate the concentrated product. Stores selling odorized butane are not subject to the restrictions of this ordinance. The ordinance also contains three exemptions to the 600-milliliter possession requirement. The first is that if you are a reseller or wholesaler of butane. The second is if the butane is solely for the purposes of a county-licensed commercial operation. And lastly, if the butane in possession has an odorant additive included in it. Staff should note that people will still be able to purchase butane online or in other jurisdictions. However, staff views this ordinance as another useful tool in combating illegal marijuana cultivation and THC extraction operations in county communities. Violations of the ordinance are a misdemeanor and subject to financial penalties or jail. Should the board adopt the proposed ordinance, staff will work on distributing informational materials to county businesses through direct mail and utilizing the county's e-distribution systems to inform them of the requirements in the... Inform them of the new requirements in the code. In closing, staff is recommending the board introduce the ordinance, waive full reading, and continue to May 23 for adoption. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I know we have a number of speakers here that wish to speak on this, but is there any questions of staff at this juncture? Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Chris and our staff, especially County Council's office, who's worked swiftly since my request at our last hearing for something to come back before this board. As recently... Unfortunately, as recently as, I believe, just last week, I think there was yet another instance where, I believe it was somewhere in Sacramento County, I'm not sure if it was unincorporated or not, where another home processing honey oil lab was discovered and, of course, large amounts of butane were recovered at the site. And so, I think it's timely that this come before this board, as was mentioned in Chris's in his staff report. Other Northern California jurisdictions in particular have given this a lot of thought, and I'm glad to see that this board has given the opportunity this afternoon to do the same. So, I'm eager to hear, Mr. Chair, from our public safety officials that have chosen to join us today, hopefully to provide affirmative testimony.
Okay, good. Any questions, then, of Chris? If not, thank you, Chris, for your work, and stand by if you would. I don't have any speaker forms, so I trust we have folks from both Sheriff and Fire and maybe other agencies that are here, so if you want to make your way to the... I don't know if there's any particular order, but I see our District Attorney, Emery Schubert, representative from the Sheriff's Department, Mr. Rilgi. And our fire personnel.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to come over and speak to you about this ordinance, proposed ordinance, and I appreciate Supervisor Serna carrying this and bringing it to our attention. Over the past three years, there have obviously been many explosions and fires that have been caused by butane hash oil labs, causing millions of dollars of property damage, as well as severe burns to dozens of people within our community. Butane hash oil labs present an extreme danger not only to the perpetrators, but to innocent bystanders and neighbors. In our county, in 2015, our office filed 46 cases involving butane hash oil, and in 2016, we filed 38 cases. In one particular case from 2014, which occurred in the Rancho Cordova area, over 140 residents of a Rancho Cordova apartment complex were displaced when two residents caused an explosion while making butane hash oil. The two perpetrators spent months in the hospital. In other cases, several children have been present when an explosion has occurred in their home. One child has been burned, a responding firefighter has been burned, and multiple pets have been killed. In 2014, the chief of Shriners Hospital, who's a person by the name of Dr. David Greenhall, described hash oil burns as an epidemic, with Shriners Hospital treating 68 burn victims over a period of three years. He conducted a study that found that the average child treated for a butane fire injury has burns over 28% of their body. It's not surprising that oftentimes that the beds are filled at Shriners with individuals that have been perpetrators of these crimes, taking the place of other children from other types of burn incidents that need treatment. Currently, butane is obviously widely available throughout the county in unlimited quantities. The ordinance will greatly reduce the amount of butane available to would-be hash oil manufacturers and create what I would call is a chilling effect on individuals who purchase butane for that purpose by requiring the purchases to be documented. The system of this regulation has worked well in the past. When Sudafedran became regulated, it essentially choked off the fuel supply for methamphetamine labs, and as a result, methamphetamine labs have virtually disappeared in our county. And with that, I would urge this board to adopt this regulation and help keep us safe here in Sacramento County. I do have some photographs, if the board would permit, from one particular case. I did not... I chose not to bring any of individuals because, quite frankly, even in my business, they're very disturbing. But I did bring photographs for each of the board members and an extra copy to show, if you wish, of the apartment complex in Rancho to show the devastation of what this kind of explosion occurs. So, if you'd like to see them-
Yeah, maybe please replace one copy right on that screen there so everybody can see it, and then you can distribute it.
You're making me dizzy.
Sorry. I haven't done this in a while.
There you go.
Does that mean?
It's going away. Can you bring it back up, please, a little bit?
Can you make it a little larger?
Am I doing that? Who's doing that?
No, no.
No, not you.
They gotta shift the transmission to... There we go. There you're going. I think that zoom function is a little touchy. There we go, right there. Good. Thank you.
This is just one picture, and then here are some photographs of the actual butane oil. You can see the damage it's done to this restroom. Exploded out the window. And then, obviously, the firefighter is engaged in trying to stop this. And then, lastly, just one photograph shows the damage to the restroom. So, pretty devastating property values, but it's no comparison to the human toll that it takes.
Right. Emery, if you just put that back up real quickly, just the second... I think the second photo, was that showing the containers? Was that a...
Yes, I believe these are the butane canisters.
And how big are those canisters?
Those... I'm going to have to ask my resident expert ahead of our major narcotics unit. Is that... Or the fire guys. I'm sure they can answer.
Those are the eight-ounce standard-sized containers.
Those are, okay. I just wondered what that reflected there. So, it's sitting on the tub or the basin there, so it gives you a perspective, so...
Look at, he's got show and tell.
There it is.
Is that 300 milliliters?
This is 300 milliliters.
Not even that big.
And these one... This one's just under 600.
Okay.
If you could speak into the microphone, that'd be helpful.
John Barzil, Supervisor and Investigator, Sac Metro Fire District. As speedily spoken, we started tracking these incidents at the end of last year, and as of November, we came up that BHO incidents started occurring in Sacramento region mid 2008. The first reported case occurred in an apartment located in Sacramento City. The number of incidents continued to rise to the point for the... To date, which of November, was 33 recorded incidents, with the majority of the incidents occurring in 2014. There were 18 recorded incidents that year. The city had a total of 11 incidents to date, with a combined fire loss of just under $800,000. The average loss per incident was just under $70,000. Metro Fire has had a total of 19 incidents, 14 of which occurred in 2014. The combined total dollar loss was $2.1 million, with an average loss of 112 per incident. We... So far, just in Metro, we've had three incidents this year, and three patients went to the hospital in February. I think one's still in intensive care, and I don't know what his outcome's going to be. He's got over 60% burns to his body.
All right. Thank you, John. Mr. Chair, Mr. Serna?
Before DA Schubert goes too far, I want to publicly thank her. It was because of a conversation she and I had during one of our regular briefings where I asked some questions about this that precipitated acquisition of some other ordinances from other Northern California jurisdictions that her office currently provided, which set us on a path to really, as I mentioned before, have our County Council do the legwork, the homework, to figure out how best we can make this suitable for this board's consideration for this county. So, thank you to DA Schubert for that.
Yeah, thanks, Emery. Okay, we all have sheriff probation and Metro Fire others that may want to speak to, so please, just in the order you would choose.
Good afternoon, Chief Deputy Phil Rilgi from Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. I, too, want to urge the board to support this effort. It's a great tool for law enforcement that we have. Last year, we had 15 of these honey oil labs. Since 2012, we've had 58. We continue to see them on the rise, and it's just another great tool for us to help combat this, save lives, structures, and money for the county of Sacramento. So, I also urge the support of this ordinance as written.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, one of the things that I've learned just in doing my own research on the subject is that the refined butane, which is what we're talking about today, not the kind that has the ethyl mercaptan that's... Can be added to odorize it. When it's odorless like that, because it is a vapor that is heavier than air, it sinks and it concentrates, and oftentimes, the ignition source can be something as simple as a pilot light for a water heater. Even, I've heard electrostatic discharge can actually ignite some of these fires. So, for our law enforcement personnel, if it's suspected that you would be... You know, our patrol officers, our deputies would be responding to a scene where BHO processing is suspected, is there added concern in terms of, you know, whether or not to use tasers, whether or not to even discharge a firearm because of the presence of something that's odorless? You don't even know if you're standing in it.
That is correct, and we do conduct training for all our patrol officers for that type of purpose, whether we can or a honey oil lab or a meth lab or any type of those labs. We do work with scenarios to negate the discharge of firearms or tasers in those type of environments for that reason.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Phil. Thanks for being here and for the sheriff's support. Okay. Metro Fire?
Good afternoon. Battalion Chief Steve Turner with Metro Fire here on behalf of Chief Todd Harms. Supervisor Serna, thank you so much for carrying this forward for us. So, we've heard some of the statistics. We know about the people that it's hurt. We know about how dangerous it is to the first responders that are dealing with this. I will tell you the other part from going to these fires and commanding these incidents. It's when the neighbors come out and they're aghast that this stuff is being used in their... In the home next to them or apartments next to them, that type of thing, and they've asked us, "What can you do about this?" And this is the answer here. So, this is... This has been, for many years, a product that has not had... Has never been used in this type of way, been used normally and safely and such. That's ended. And so, us having an appropriate response to that about an ordinance like this is critical. So, thank you very much, and on behalf of the Fire Department, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Steve, for being here this afternoon, on behalf of Chief Harms. Probation?
Good afternoon. Marlon, you're our Assistant Chief here for Chief Seal. Sorry you couldn't be here today. I won't reiterate or restate essentially everything that's been said, but just would really echo that same concern. For the probation department, it's essentially that, is it is greatly an officer's safety concern for our staff. The most recent data I'm aware of, I think we have 91 cases of people on probation for this exact same thing, manufacturing essentially, honey oil. So, would like your support, obviously, in that regard. So, thank you, Marlon.
Thanks, Marlon. Okay, sure.
Hi, I'm Mike Five with the Sacramento Area Firefighters, Local 522. I also wear a couple hats. I'm also an executive board member for the Firefighters Burn Institute here in Sacramento that has funded the burn unit up at UC Davis, as well as I represent the International Association of Firefighters in the 10th District, which is New Mexico, Arizona, California, Hawaii. This has been a huge incident or thing for us here regionally. We've been trying to bring forward education, and I appreciate the boards looking into this issue and passing this resolution, hopefully, forward. Because, again, it's a huge educational issue for us and trying to get the understanding out to the community of what a big incident. Anytime, I would say at least 50% of currently the people that are in the burn unit are due to honey oil burns right now, and Dr. Greenhall and I have been trying to get this message out, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and doing that. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Oh, here.
Walt White, Fire Chief, City of Sacramento. I also want to just express my gratitude. Supervisor Serna reached out for some information, what we could help provide to this, and we are very appreciative of there being some regulation on really the... And that the legislation be... Or the ordinance be written very responsible to focus on the specific issue, which is the non-odorized. I mean, we all understand that there is some more legitimate uses for butane, but the non-odorized, in addition to the human toll that is taken with the injuries and the burns, it's created a lot of economic cost to the agencies. It's tying up valuable resources, not just fire companies, but hospital beds, and creating a lot of expense to treat the victims and to prosecute the perpetrators. So, I appreciate your...
Appreciate your support, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, anyone else? All right, very good. Well, thank you for all your support and input on the proposed ordinance, which is the first reading today, so bring it back to the boards. Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to belabor the point, I think we heard very clearly from local fire officials, probation, or Sheriff's Office, and I do want to thank the folks from law enforcement that showed up today here, and please extend my thanks to Sheriff Jones and Chief Seal for their support of this ordinance. I think it's pretty clear from the testimonials and the experience of those that have actually seen these explosions, the aftermaths of these fires, not just the property damage, but more importantly, the injury and death associated with this, that this is something that is, I firmly believe is somewhat out of control at this point. I would go so far as to say that if it is the will of this board to support the ordinance today, I'd like to encourage certainly our other sister jurisdictions in our county, at least maybe starting with our county, to also consider other similar policy, because if this ordinance is passed and is put into effect, certainly you can go across political boundaries and depending on the rules there, purchase unlimited quantities of butane, refined butane. But I think the more and more we see this problem continue to develop and grow, I think it's going to be more and more incumbent upon local policymakers to take seriously this threat. So, I'm going to move the item and ask for my colleagues' support.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Anyone else?
Second.
Okay, so move the second to approve the recommendations outlined, reduce the ordinance, and return for final adoption on May 23. And if nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you all for being here, and hopefully it'll help in some of the enforcement activities. All right. I find the name of that one product pretty interesting, Torched. Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item number 56, requesting a procedure for an appointment to complete the remaining term of retiring assessor Kathleen Kelleher.
Good afternoon, Mr. Devine.
Good afternoon, Board Chair and Board Members. I'm glad they moved the combustibles away from me. In front of you today is a process in terms of picking an appointment to complete the remaining term of retiring assessor Kathleen Kelleher. She's retiring on May 13, and her term expires the first Monday of 2019. So, approximately 19 months that we are looking at a process in which to fill with an interim assessor. And before you is the process that we have in place. We're asking that the county executive conduct a recruitment for the assessor vacancy. We're establishing minimum qualifications. Applications will be rated based upon-
Applications will be rated based upon meeting the minimum qualifications, and then we will have an interview, an open session here. And we are anticipating this process to kick off. The opening period would be starting next week, and come back to the board with interviews in sometime in the two meetings in June. So that's what the process we have outlined. This is consistent with the county charter, which also defers over to the government code, and is something that we want to seek your approval moving forward with.
David, it's still not clear, though. Are we under any timeline to fill the vacancy once the position becomes vacant? Vacates on Sunday, May 14th, and so is there a 30-day period by which we have to fill it? Is there a 60-day period due as expeditiously as feasible? So what is the prescription in the law?
Government Code Section 25304 identifies a reasonable amount of time. It doesn't give any specific timelines, so that's what we're trying to get this done within 30 to 60 days.
That just wasn't clear in the staff report. I shared this with Mr. Gill yesterday, and it just didn't, you didn't say, just kind of left it processed, but you didn't say you need, we need to do it by this amount of time, or that it prescribes a reasonable amount of time to what you just said, so.
We'd like to get it done as soon as we can.
Okay.
One of the things, Mr. Chair and members of the board, when Ms. Kelleher retires, the duties will go to the assistant. So we will have an, and the duties will be.
Anacting.
Anacting while we go through this process.
Okay. All right. This is the first time.
I can't, I couldn't hear what you said.
That we do have, Ms. Manley, who is the assistant assessor, will take on the duties while we finish this process.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. I think we needed to look at agendas, though. We've got not only budget, but we've got a, you know, a process for the DOT tax, there may be some other items that are coming back, and so depending upon number of applicants, how this board will choose to do the public interviews, like you see, if it leaves a better part of an afternoon or morning being dedicated to it, depending upon number of applicants and, you know, equal amount of time, and again, the format will have to be, again, I think, clear to all the candidates, and maybe there's, it'll only be a very small number, but in the event that there are several, then we need to make sure our agendas allow for that, so.
Correct. We will manage the agenda with that.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions, then? So you're gonna announce the opening when?
Monday.
Monday, okay. So May 15th will be the announcement, and then what, you'll do a two-week process?
We'll do a two-week, keep it open in two weeks, have it closed on Friday before Memorial Day. I think that's the 26th.
All right, 26th, okay, very good. Thanks, Dave. Okay. I don't think you need any action, just direction around, do you need action on this?
I don't believe, I don't believe so. I think if you just.
Yeah, because it just outlines how you're gonna do the process. So you'll be back to us, so, all right. Very good. Okay, that's a receiving file. All right, we have some appointments, and I know we have some adjournments, and maybe some board member comments as well, so we'll go to the appointments.
Item number 57, your nominations. We're continuing to May 23rd Sacramento County Mental Health Board and Sacramento County Youth Commission. We're continuing to June 6th Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, In-Home Supported Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And your today's items, Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters.
I'd like to nominate Thomas Roten and Tina Vanilla.
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to May 23rd.
Okay. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters.
Please nominate, or I'd like to nominate Andrew Keller, and continue the remainder to June 26th. 6th.
June 6th.
June 6th.
Okay. Then Natoli, that we're continuing to June 6th.
Continuing that, yes, I concur.
Okay. Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, I believe there's a interview pending, and continue this to June 6, 2017.
Okay. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Cerner.
I'd like to reappoint Henry Liu.
Okay. Thank you. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to June 6.
Thank you. South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Cerner.
Please continue to June 6.
And Supervisor Kennedy. That concludes your nominations.
All right, that takes us to the bottom part of the agenda, so we do have a couple of adjournments, and let me take board member comments and county executive comments first, and then we'll go to the adjournments. Okay.
Got a couple of announcements. On May 23rd, we have a fairly busy agenda again. One of the big items that I want to spotlight is that we had a report that was due back to the board, and that's a decision on vote by mail. So we have slated 60 minutes for that at 10:15 to have that discussion. We also are gonna have a report back from Sacramento County Medi-Cal Dental Advisory Committee, which is another fairly extensive report that we'll be presenting to you. In the afternoon, we have the Child Protective Oversight Committee report, and on the 24th, which we opened up Wednesday afternoon, is we have numerous planning and zoning items. And one of the ones I wanted to spotlight for the board is at 3:00 PM is a workshop on the Climate Action Plan. As the board knows, we've been working and implementing the state greenhouse gas reduction, and we have done a lot of work and a lot of community outreach, and the intent that we have is to come back to you, give you a framework, what we've been doing, and where we see this item going in the future for you. So again, a little bit of apologies, but there is a lot of stuff coming to you on the 23rd and 24th.
Okay, very good. All right, Mr. Cerner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to let the county executive and the board know that, as was mentioned, I believe on the 23rd, you're bringing the vote by mail item back to us. I did have a chance to speak with Secretary Padilla, and so we, you should, from your office, Nav, reach out directly to the Secretary of State's office to give them the details, the time and the place. He did express some interest, if his schedule permits, to actually be here to provide some testimony.
Perfect, thank you, I'll do that.
Could I just ask on that, because we've had the conversation back and forth, but this, this is one of those things, depending upon what action we take, we may get more feedback after the fact than we do before we contemplate any action. I'm just wondering if there, I know we have the county website, and we have people that follow us and so forth, I don't know if that's gonna get us to a very broad distribution, but I do think that it might be one of those things where if we reach out to, certainly to the B and do through our county website, that, you know, they choose what they want to cover, but I do think that this is important enough consideration at the juncture, because we have some timeframes that this is gonna have to fit by, and obviously there are some financial commitments, but it will, it could affect the manner in which people will cast their ballots as it relates to vote by mail, voting centers, the traditional voting booths in precincts throughout the county, and I just, I think that it's important to, recognizing where we are with the migration towards vote by mail by choice, there's still a pretty, you know, healthy segment of folks in this community that like going on Election Day to their polling place in their, you know, community, whether it's in their local neighborhood immediately or not, and so I just, I don't know if there's a way, Nav, in light of that, try to get that information out a little more broadly.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, maybe through some of the media outlets that if they choose to cover it, because I just think, I think it's important enough consideration, and once we act and set a direction, again, we could certainly change our minds, but it has fiscal consequences as well as some timing for election cycles as well, so.
We will also work with your districts if you have a preferred publication in your district, you want us to put the ad in, we can do that, too. We'll work with the B and with other news outlets.
Okay, thanks. All right. Any other member of the board have any other comments?
I do.
I know you have some adjournments, okay, comments, good.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to ask you to look at the TOT applications. I go back from Washington DC, there were two of the largest binders I have ever seen of all the applications, and I don't think it's possible that we can go through them, 138 or something like that with all the information, and a lot of people want a meeting, and I think there needs to be some process put to this. I mean, things just like divvied up between sports and arts and community benefit things, but also some understanding of who the groups are and what their financial background is. If I had asked Economic Development to talk to the regional foundation about how they go through Big Day of Giving on the applications there, they, they look into the financial stability and other things, so that we don't accidentally give away our precious TOT money to a group that goes out of business the next day. I mean, a lot of other things in there, too, but, I mean, I know it wants to be in this budget, and maybe we pass a certain amount, whatever it turns out to be, and then we continue coming up with the process, you know, and deal with it later in the summer. I don't know what the right answer is, but there's, it's untenable the way it is.
Yes, I will take that on. I am scheduling a meeting with Don's office to go over what the process will be in June, so by May 23rd, we should have a report back to you on what that will be.
Okay. And then the other one thing is, I apologize to everybody for my hearing problem. I'm going to try and get into the doctor tomorrow.
We didn't notice.
What?
What, what, what?
Oh, brother.
No sympathy from those players, I tell you.
Yeah, I know, it's okay.
Okay. Mr. Cerner, then back to Ms. Peters, first my adjournments. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to take this opportunity to, once again, express my great disappointment, as was recently reported, actually, back-to-back days, we had some very unfortunate incidents of dog bites on the parkway. And while my office was certainly made well aware of the one that was most highlighted in the Sacramento Bee weeks ago, the response that I receive every time there is something like this that is publicized from my constituents is not something that I wish wouldn't happen. Quite frankly, sometimes when these unfortunate incidents happen, it elevates it to a place where it sparks an exchange with my constituents in District One that want to enjoy the parkway without threat, and it's healthy in that regard. However, it continues to be an issue that I've asked the county CEO countless times now, what are we going to do differently? I know that he has explained to us at the beginning of the calendar year that there was a plan to adjust in terms of deployment of personnel, and I believe that adjustment has occurred, but now there's yet, I think there's yet another plan to adjust, and I, while I appreciate and understand the need to do that, this absolutely cannot continue. I mean, we, when we have our constituents that are feeling forced to carry bear spray with them, when they're attempting to ride their bicycles through a parkway, you know, alarm bells should go off for everyone. And so I'm not taking this lightly, just as I don't take lightly any of the other grievances, rightful grievances that get expressed my way when people are not able to enjoy their parkway. And so I'm looking squarely at the CEO's office that come our budget discussions, that we're gonna have that conversation, and it's gonna manifest itself in the form of your recommendations, Nav, about how we're gonna do things better and differently, because this absolutely cannot continue. It's not sustainable, it's not healthy, it's dangerous, and there's absolutely no good answer, quite frankly, right now, today, for constituents that want to pursue a legitimate activity on a parkway that is anything but hospitable.
Okay, so, and that was bear spray, not hairspray.
I got it.
Was that for me?
With that, Ms. Peters.
I have two adjournments today. First, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Gus Bagatellus. Last month, we lost a prominent businessman, Mr. Bagatellus. He worked in the glass industry and eventually established a successful glazing business with his sons, who continue to extend his legacy and expertise into the future of Bagatellus Glass. He was a son of immigrant Greek parents who grew up with four brothers in San Francisco. He was a football star at Balboa High School, and later played at the University of Idaho. He really lived the true sense of the American dream, being successful in business here in Sacramento. A caring husband and patriarch to a large family of four sons, one daughter, and six grandchildren. He will be deeply missed by his family and to all who knew him, and I'd like the board to adjourn in memory of Mr. Bagatellus. Then, as tragically, on April 26th, Fusako Petrus of North Highlands was out for her normal morning walk that she'd taken for some 40 years with a 61-year-old friend on the track at Highlands High School. According, the neighbors tell us that she had been walking there for 30 or 40 years and always felt safe on the track. A young man approached her friend and started to attack the 61-year-old woman. Mrs. Petrus became aware of it and tried to fend off the attacker with her walking stick. But he redirected his anger, killing her and injuring her friend. Now makeshift shrine with candles and flowers is in front of Mrs. Petrus's neat one-story home with manicured trimmed shrubs. The accused murderer was arrested quickly and arraigned in Superior Court last week. Her death is tragic and shocking, but I'd like us to remember her for who she was and not how her life ended. Neighbor said they were not surprised that she tried to stop the assault, because that's the kind of person she was, also caring about each other, always caring about each other. She was a native of Japan and met her husband Alfred, who was in the US Air Force after World War II. They settled in North Highlands, and in 1968 purchased their home. She was a store clerk at the former McClellan Air Force Base until she retired, and she became a widow 15 years ago. She lived in a very close knit neighborhood, while all the neighbors get along, they help each other with routine chores, like taking out each other's trash. In 1986, she was taking out others' trash. And on the 26th of April, when she came to the aid of her friend, her actions were anything but routine. They were heroic and unselfish, and deserving of recognition for her bravery and courage, and I'd like to adjourn today in her memory also.
Thank you for, both of those are adjournments, Supervisor Peters and this board, again, with our sympathies, certainly to both the families and friends of these two fine people. We will adjourn today in memory of Gus Bagatellus and Fusako Petrus. Your turn.